Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order now. This is our May 5, 2022, public hearing for our proposed 2022 and 2023 annual budget. I call that meeting to order at this time. I'm going to ask Mr. Crescendo if you could lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance at this time, and then we'll have a roll call.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll do that when we get to the regular meeting. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Blumenau?
Here.
Mr. Crescendo?
Here.
Mr. Gomez?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mr. Perino?
Here.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Pastor Williams?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clark. I'm going to now turn into the hands of our Superintendent of Business, Mr. Tuttle, for this presentation at this time. Mr. Tuttle.
Hello, good evening. Thank you, President Williams, members of the Board, Superintendent Creedon. Tonight, we're here to present our public hearing, which is legally required, that we have one before our actual budget vote on May 17, and actually give one opportunity for the public to have comment after we're done. So legally required by New York State, we must present the budget in three components: administrative, program, and capital. And we started this back in February, where we presented all the three budgets, each on its own individual night. And then, at the last meeting, we had the Board adopt the final budget for the public vote. So for the 2223 proposed budget, and what the Board actually adopted last Board meeting, is $228,641,730. Included in there, you'll see, we have our administrative piece, a little over $22 million, our program, which is our biggest component, almost $160 million in our capital, which has a significant increase, and we'll show you why with our capital expenditure proposal as well. So that's over almost $47 million. So this year, inside the Proposition 1, you'll see the budget for those three components, and we also are proposing a capital project overview. Some of the things that we need, and we're looking at health and safety, and what we've gone through is our five-year building condition survey, and we do that every year, so we always have a five-year plan of what things in each building need repair, and so that's what we focus on this year. So one of the things at the high school in William A. Carter, we need some roofing repair. At the high school, we do some lighting upgrades, and infrastructure and athletic field upgrades. Also at the high school, in Mont Hagen and Twin Towers, performance-based improvements. So not only are we hitting sports and athletics, we're also hitting the theater and the fine arts as well. Also at William A. Carter and Mont Hagen, some flooring replacements. Presidential Park, looking at putting a canopy out by the bus loop for inclement weather, so students are safe, and some infrastructure there. And then Maple Hill Playground, which we would extend the playground there, and also add a walking loop around the building, and some infrastructure upgrades there at Maple Hill as well. So that's almost $16 million. So our proposed tax levy this year is $72,404,150. And as we've talked about in the past several Board meetings, with our significant increase in revenue this year, that'll be a $5 million reduction in the tax levy, and that $5 million will be a significant decrease in what the community pays as part of the tax levy. Now, I always put the little caution in the wind, based on equalization rates that come back in August, you may see a bigger decrease, or a little bit, slighter decrease, but hopefully everyone's tax bill will be a little bit less than it was this past year. So some of the things that we need to keep in mind is the contingent budget rules. So if our first vote in May 17 were to be defeated, actually, the first vote in May 17, if we were to pass it, we need 50-plus-one votes to be positive and have a successful vote. If we need to go to contingent budget rules, and that would be if the budget failed, probably twice, or maybe once, depending on how many times we want to put up the same budget, we would have to go back to the same tax levy as last year, and that means that that $5 million decrease would go away. And then we would have to figure out some other method of passing a budget. So, and then additionally, in a contingent budget, as always, it's a state law, no additional budget requests can be honored, no equipment purchases, except health and safety can be made, and then we would also have to charge for facilities in any given day in the winter or fall. If you went to a high school gym or any of the gyms in the district, you'll see a sports team or some type of team practicing, or doing some type of exercises or workouts in those gyms. And we provide that free of charge right now. If we went to contingent, we would have to actually charge a fee. So next opportunity, we've had several engagements with the community here in the media center. Our next one is May 12. It's called Coffee and Conversation, and you can come and ask questions about the budget if you have any critical questions before you actually vote on Tuesday, May 17. Okay? We've offered this as our fifth opportunity to come and ask questions, and we encourage everyone to come and ask questions. Also, we established this year a budget@ecsdm.org. You can email us questions. That email goes to myself and Superintendent Creedon, and we respond very quickly with any type of questions you may have about the budget. So again, the budget vote is Tuesday, May 17. The polls open at 7:00, and they close at 9:00. And that's all I have. Thank you. Any comments?
At this time, we're going to open up for any public comments on the proposed budget at this time. Are there any public comments on the proposed budget? Yes, sir. You have to come to the mic like we normally would, and I think there's a sheet to sign in as well.
Cool. So my name is Andrew Moore, by the way. So as far as with the budget go, I've been attending most of these meetings for quite some time. I actually even had the opportunity to even sit down with the current administration about the budget. What I noticed here, and I want to ask, is that I see a lot of capital improvements, but I have yet to see anything that's addressing the social and emotional development of our students, right? Also, the special needs students, also the special education students. I have yet to see that. It's constantly, constantly building improvements, whether it has to do with new lighting, or 1.6 million towards a stadium and its elevator, but what about the children in this community? What about the fact that we're coming off a two-year pandemic, and we have yet to see anything being addressed to the social and emotional development for our students? I'm gonna continue this speech later on, but I wanted to bring this up now, because we're all talking about the budget, and I'm seeing things that are just being blindsided by the public. And you guys know exactly what you're doing, but you're only skating around the real truth, the real, real truth. Let's start addressing the needs of this community, and stop hiding behind the fact that we need to have to continue having capital improvements to buildings. I spoke to many of these community members out here, and Twin Towers has been worked on for over 30 years. Now you want to add a health clinic to it as well. Let's speak the truth when we come up here, when we address the public. And I'm gonna make sure it's my business, as I am running for school board this year, to make it my business that the public sees the truth, and hears the truth. I'll continue my speech when it's open discussion.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak on the proposed budget at this time? If not, we'll address that when we move into the regular meeting. Yes?
Before the public spoke, I was gonna ask a question to Mr. Tuttle.
Yes, sir.
Let me go back and ask it?
Yes, I'll allow you.
I know that the current budget has the bus loop for Presidential Park. I know that sometime back, there was a discussion about building like a loop for Twin Towers, because it's always in the mornings, an issue of traffic congestion, sometimes drivers that go a little too fast to beat the turn, and as I said before, there's been hit-on collisions. I'm very grateful for the local police in managing that, our officers there, but what's the status with respect to that? There was a talk at one point, I think maybe a year or two ago, about building in loops so that the buses, when they come in, could park there. Is that gonna be part of the Twin Towers project, or is that something that's gonna be separately?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So back in December, we had a referendum for Twin Towers renovation, and in that renovation, there is coming, I'm not sure, the Street, Grand Street. I think we're gonna have an off-loop for additional parent drop-off, and then in the other side, on Wisner, creating a different bus loop. So we actually will have vehicles coming off the actual main road for drop-off and pickup. So we are addressing that, and that's through this capital project that we're doing at Twin Towers.
Thank you, because I know that's an area of the traffic congestion there, kids going to the high school, the middle school, people traveling to get the 211 to go to work. So it's always a lot of congestion, and I think that will help relieve it and ensure safety in the travel to school as well as after school. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I just have a comment, and I'll make it brief. I would like to thank Mr. Tuttle for the hard work he put into the budget. I also want to thank Mr. Moore for his comments that he just brought to the mic and concerns. And I like the efforts that have been made to be more transparent with the public, but I think we even need to do more in next year's budget, and I'm still gonna keep pushing for that zero-based budget with a lot of transparency, because that's where the accountability comes in. And I just appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing, and then we'll move into our regular meeting. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
So moved and seconded. No discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? If so passes, now I take this opportunity to call to order the regular meeting, the May 5, 2022, regular meeting of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. I'm gonna ask Mr. Mitchell Williams if he would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I'll ask everybody if they will remain standing for a few minutes, for a couple of moments of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a couple minutes of silence, please. Thank you.
That would help. Thank you. As the first moment of silence this evening is for Mr. — I'm sorry. First moment of silence this evening is for Mr. Michael Edwards. Mr. Edwards, a preeminent educator in the Middletown School District. He served the district for almost 30 years in various capacities. A social science instructor, Chair of the Department of Social Science. He also served as Vice Principal of A.J. Verrally Junior High School, and Principal of the High School, and Principal of Memorial School. Not an easy job. Mr. Edwards served in, as his capacity, at A.J. Verrally in the '60s and in the early '70s. At that time, we had 1,500 people in that building, and the present site of this building where we're in now, the only thing is that it was one-quarter the size of this building. So we had 1,500 students in a building one-quarter the size of this building. Mike was responsible, partly for student behavior and partly for instruction. He treated everyone as professional. But you better not make, you better not make a mistake. If you did, you better correct it, or he would take action. If you had to do a report, it had to be in on time. If you had to attend a meeting, you better not miss the meeting without a very good At the high school, he initiated a number of curriculum improvements. He was a big proponent of mastery learning. After his time at the high school was up, he was appointed Principal of Memorial School, apparently, and to see that the school had a good renovation, it was under renovation at the time, and he was the one to do the job. Very positive person. I've never heard Mike say anything negative about anyone, at least not in public. He believed that all students could learn, given the necessary time and the materials. He's also served his country as a member of the United States Air Force. He was very active in the community, in the J.C.'s, and in other organizations, and in the Grace Episcopal Church. Married for 68 years. Wonderful family, and Mike will most definitely be missed. The other two moments of silence this evening, they're not Middletown staff members, but it sort of tore the heart of the whole country. The New York City firefighter, Timothy Klein, who entered a building in Brooklyn, and unfortunately, a ceiling collapsed onto him. To quote New York City Mayor Eric Adams, "New York City has lost one of its bravest firemen." Fireman Klein was a six-year veteran of the department. It's not easy being a first responder when you answer a fire alarm, you never know what's gonna happen. You can have a building, floor collapse, you can have a ceiling fall down on you, a number of things can happen, most of them not very good. The final moment of silence this evening, a Texas National Guardsman, Bishop E. Evans. He jumped into the Rio Grande to save two individuals. Unfortunately, he himself drowned in this. To quote Representative Tony Gonzalez, "This young soldier made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of protecting and serving our country." So all these three individuals, one of Middletown, two not of Middletown, they will be very much missed. Please remember them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you.
Mission of the Enlarged —
Mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown, Ms. Tobiasin, please.
The mission of the Enlarged City School District of Middletown. We strive to provide physically sound educational opportunities in a safe environment that continuously support our diverse student population. We will enable all students to graduate, to reach their full potential, to become lifelong learners, and to be competitive, productive members of society.
Thank you, Mr. Tobiasin. Roll call, Mrs. Clark.
Mrs. Blumenau?
Here.
Mr. Crescendo?
Here.
Mr. Gomez?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mr. Perino?
Here.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Here.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Like to entertain a motion for the approval of our agenda tonight.
Mr. President, before we move on to vote on that, I'm kind of troubled that I see that in today's agenda, we've moved the recognition and community reports, and perhaps more importantly, the opportunity to address the Board after a number of important votes, where I think there may be members of the public may want to speak. I do believe it's important, as trustees, we hear the people first, whether we're gonna vote. At the end of the day, we're gonna vote our conscience. There may be some votes that people will be supportive of my position, some they'll be against, but I have a moral duty to listen to the people. So I will move that we put back, as normally is the practice, the public opportunity to address the Board, so that when we cast these important votes, we will do it after hearing the people speak. And the people here, I don't know how the people are gonna speak, they may speak from different perspectives on any given issue, but whatever perspective they're gonna say, they have a duty to be heard, and we have an obligation to hear them. Because at the end of the day, we are the trustees, not of the school district, but of the over 20,000 voters.
Mr. Gomez, if you're gonna make a motion, you can make a motion, and we'll have a discussion.
My motion is, yes. My motion will be, Mr. President, that we —
Second, sir, for the agenda.
— move the opportunity to address the Board, and I will say recognition for the community reports, because I know parents and children are here for that, move it back prior to personnel action items.
I would second that, and I concur, and I also want to thank, in the discussion portion, thank Ms. Clark for all of the many changes she made for me in the last two days. Thank you, Ms. Clark.
So my question is, I have a motion to change, to change the agenda, and I have a second. Is that what I have?
No, you have a motion to approve the agenda.
But I did not get a second. I didn't get a second on it yet.
Because Mr. Gomez asked to speak, so I don't know the —
So, so what we're doing —
Parliamentary, you know.
Parliamentary-wise, this motion has been presented, there's a second discussion.
I have something more to say. I'd like to know how and why it was changed, because I know, Ms. Clark, you didn't change it.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but —
Who moved it out of order from the way we usually —
It's not. So for the discussion, it's not moved out of order, this is the order that it's always been in. This is the order that it's always been in, so for the discussion, in that favor.
I see. Okay.
It's the order it's always been in.
But I guess I misunderstood that, but I do agree with my colleague here that it is important we change it.
Okay.
Thanks, President Williams.
Any other discussion?
Can I have some clarification? Where are we in this vote?
This is a motion to amend?
No, we need to —
We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as is.
Right. And then we need a motion.
So we need a second.
Do we have a second for the motion to approve the agenda? That's my question. Do we, Mrs. Clark?
All right, so let's rewind. We want to make sure we do this right.
We have a motion to, a second rather, to approve the agenda.
Well, my, my dear friend and colleague, my concern, how could I approve an agenda if I want to change?
Mr. Gomez, we get a second, then we have discussion. So during this discussion, you can make a motion to amend the agenda. We have to go through the process first.
I believe that's what he did, though. I'm pretty sure —
Having gotten a second on —
We don't have a second on approving the agenda.
Please.
A second?
Now we do.
So here's where we make sure that we're gonna stay in order. Mr. Perino made a motion. That motion was presented. Is there a second on that?
Paula.
Paula, second on that? Now we have the —
With all due respect to our, to our community, this is the way our agenda has always been. There has been no change to it, so I second that we keep our agenda in place for the few approvals, approvals and votes that we need to make.
I would have to —
If we follow parliamentary procedure, Mr. Gomez now can make a motion to amend the agenda, and if it's second, we take a vote, and if it doesn't pass, we go with the original agenda.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll close my remarks with saying, with all respect to my dear colleagues, who I would consider friends here, I think I may not have been here as long as some of my other colleagues. I've been here since 2017, but I haven't been diagnosed with Alzheimer's dementia as of yet, but I do recall that we do community reports, and we do do the opportunity to address the Board often before some of the votes. In fact, a lot of the administrative votes personnel often left to the end. So there is a change.
So as a point of order, as a point of order, I want to clarify, I want to make sure that we clarify. This agenda, and this is ridiculous, but this agenda is the agenda that it has been. Nothing has been moved out of order, nothing has been changed. This is the agenda. We have had the personnel agenda, we have gone into recognition, community reports, and then we've had opportunity to address. This is the agenda. There is a motion on the floor to approve the agenda, and there is a second. This is the discussion. You are asking now, now your motion was to amend, amend the agenda, so that we would be, we would move this item to the front. That's what you're, and that's what you're asking.
I believe that before, well, pursuant to parliamentary procedure, what's motion first, to approve, we'll go in that order. So I'll yield to that point, that is correct. But what I'm saying is, the reason I made my application was that before we approved the agenda, we made a change so that we will be approving an agenda not twice, but once. And that void, now we approved it, now we're gonna go change it, so let's just make the change first. But given the fact that my distinguished colleague, Mr. Perino, made a motion, I will vote to approve the agenda, but then I'm gonna move that we make the amendment to change it, and I may, we'll ask for roll call on the amendment to change it.
All right, and we will do so. So we have, the motion is on the floor. The motion is on the floor to approve the agenda as is. We've had the discussion. All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Oppose? Nobody's opposed.
I oppose because I want to support his change.
Well, this time, I'm gonna, well, it's already approved.
Now, now I'm gonna open the floor, I'm gonna open the floor. Mr. Gomez has now would like to make a motion. Again, you may make your motion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This time, I'm gonna motion that we move items in the calendar AG, recognitions and community reports, and recognition and community report number eight, sorry, and number nine, ability to address the Board before the personnel action items. And I would ask also for a roll call vote.
For clarity's sake, Mrs. Clark, are you, are you getting this, getting this now?
So I have a point of order. If we just approve the agenda as it exists, how can we go about changing it again after it's been approved?
That's what Mr. Gomez asked before we took the vote.
With all due respect, my dear colleague, we did not, then what I'm understanding, we're gonna make this a booby trap. Okay, please vote this way, because we have to do this first, but wait, we can do the second part. I don't think that's the way we do business, right?
So I'm —
Now, as Mr. President said, we have a second now. Now it's a chance to vote whether we're gonna amend it, and all is still irony.
I would like to —
I am, hold on. I have entertained the motion. Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All right. We'll have the discussion, we're moving on to the vote for the amendment of, moving on on the vote to the amendment of the agenda.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
We're not gonna have to go through this at every next meeting, correct? This is a one-time deal?
I'm not going through this again. So —
Thank you.
Can we, we're not gonna go through this because, because we're gonna talk after this is over, too. But at the end of the day, I'm entertaining where we are in the moment, and where we are in the moment now is that we have a motion. And so now, you have asked for a roll, you asked for a roll call vote, sir?
Yes.
We will do a roll call vote on this, on this, on this motion to amend the agenda. Mrs. Clark, can you please do the roll call?
Before we do that, I hate to be annoying, can we be clear on what we're changing, where what's going on?
The change, yes. Can, Mrs. Clark, will you please read what the change is?
I have a motion to move eight, which is recognitions, community reports, and nine, opportunity to address the Board, above the personnel action items, so that they would become seven and eight, and personnel action items would become number nine.
Is everybody, is everybody clear on that motion? Is everybody clear on that motion?
Yes.
Roll call.
Mrs. Blumenau?
No.
Mr. Crescendo?
No.
Mr. Gomez?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Perino?
No.
Ms. Tobiasin?
No.
Mr. Freddie Williams? Mr. Gomez?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Perino?
No.
Ms. Tobiasin?
No.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Pastor Williams?
No.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
No.
The, the motion has not passed, so we will continue, we will continue on with the agenda as, as it is already been passed. Approval, I need a motion for the approval of regular minutes from our April 21st, 2022 meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes, moving on, personnel action items. I, I need a motion for the approval of Personnel Memorandum 22A Administrative, please.
Second.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, I just don't think it's a good move for our district.
All right, any other discussion?
I'd like to say that it is a good move for our district. I think it moves us forward.
Thank you.
With, oh, may I speak, Mr. President? With respect to item A, 22A, which I believe involves a, creating a system where the principal goes grade by grade, I think that's what Mrs. Creedon had proposed, that, I'm, I support that idea, as far as education, it's a positive reform, so for A, I will vote yes, however, I have very serious concerns in some of the other items, B and C and D, while
You'll have your opportunity to discuss those items when we get there.
And all I want to say with respect to A is that in moving forward for, towards reforms, we need to be mindful and do it in a constructive manner, that we take into account all the different talents of our community, and that by me, the people that have served in our district for years, okay, and that have won the heart of the community for their legacy in their children, and that we also taking consideration always in any item, the concerns of the public, the community, whichever diverse, I think, I commend Mrs. Creedon for the putting forward an idea that allow a same principle, because it'll be a structure of constructive, constructive, a structure of continuity, the kids will have the same house principle, and it'll be a flow for the teachers to work with, so on that aspect, I'll vote yes on A.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oppose.
So passes, thank you. Approval of Personnel Memorandum 22B Administrative, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, discussion?
I don't know what we're allowed to say since it's a personnel matter, but I am vehemently against this, and I, it's very questionable at best.
Mr. President, I also have reservations about the abolishing of the dean positions here, I think that we need, I think deans play a very, do play a very important role, I think that the deans we've had working here have played a very critical role, and I, I cannot support B for that.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to speak in favor of the motion, I think that as part of the plan to move forward, the dean positions that are, that are part of this personnel memorandum are, are rightfully being abolished, and we need to move forward with the new plan as the superintendent has, has designed. I'll be voting in favor of the motion.
Any, any other discussion? Mr. Perino?
No, I believe in this plan that Mrs. Creedon has put forth, and I know this whole plan was worked on for many, many days and, by Mrs. Creedon, Mrs. Adama, Dr. Williams, and other members of the high school staff. Looking at the whole plan, we did discuss it in length at, in an executive session when, unfortunately, some members could not be there.
Not by choice, Mr. Perino.
Well, were you in attendance?
Don't, don't go there.
I was not in attendance, and there was a very good reason.
Listen.
Okay, so what I'm saying is
We're gonna move forward.
If you try to take the plan apart, the whole plan is in jeopardy of working, am I correct on that or not?
Say it one more time, sir.
If you try to take this plan apart and pick and choose what you like and what you don't like, it's all part of a comprehensive plan, the creation of positions, the abolishing of positions and so on, it's not the point that people are gonna lose their jobs, they're gonna be assigned to other duties, so.
I don't think anybody Yeah, if I, if I could just provide a point of clarification, there are no individuals, the two positions that are being reduced are going to be unfilled as of July 1st, because the deans that are currently serving in them have been board-approved already to become instructional leaders, so there's no loss of position for any current employee.
Mr. Perino, just to respond to your remark, I haven't voted in favor of any of this move, and I'm very not
Mr. Gomez?
Sorry, I turned my mic off.
You're not in favor of the plan?
The plan itself, absolutely not.
That is, that is absolutely your prerogative. I'm, I, I'm, is there any other, any other discussion? If not, we're going to move to the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
It so passes.
I voted, I was gonna vote nay.
I'm sorry.
My vote was gonna be a nay on B.
To nay?
Yeah, nay, aye.
It so passes, it so passes, seven to two, thank you. Moving on to Approval of Personnel Memorandum 22C Administrative.
A happy moment.
So moved.
I don't mean to interrupt you, and I apologize for being out of order, but I just was informed by a member of the public that they cut the feed during the roll call for that last vote, and it didn't go through on the public, so I would like to have that roll call redone for the public, so that they can know who voted yes and who voted no.
It is, it's, it's unnecessary because the feed is being recorded and will be, and will be placed back out. They didn't cut, if, if something happened, it wasn't that they cut the feed.
A member, well, I'm just saying for the record, I voted no, I hope that doesn't get cut, and Mr. Gomez voted no on that, just so we're clear, sorry.
And, and the minutes, the minutes are very clear as to, to what you voted as well. Now
Can we celebrate?
Yeah, I, I, I asked for a motion, I asked for a motion for Approval of Personnel Memorandum 22C Administrative.
Second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion here?
Think it's a great move.
Thank you.
Oh, I just wanna say, I've seen, I miss Brookins' work at Presidential Park, and we still miss her there, and she's in a standing job, she does bring the traits we want to see in an educator, administrator, or teacher, I think she brings her heart and soul, her love for the kids and the parents, and, and I am very honored to see her succeed in this endeavor.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? It so passes. We are going, we're going to come back at the end of our personnel
No, she's gonna, oh, you're gonna do
At the end, at, let's finish, let's finish up the rest of the personnel items, and then we're gonna come back and we're going to greet our new Twin Towers principal.
President Williams, I'm sorry for interrupting again, but I was just informed by another member of the public that the live feed has been cut for eight minutes, and that means the public did not hear our vote on 22B, so I just want to state for the record again, I voted no, Mr. Gomez voted no, thank you.
Okay, and just for, just for clarity's sake, your vote is a part of public record, and, and even if, even if there was a difficulty with the feed, and it does not necessarily mean that there was a difficulty with the feed, but, but it's a part of public record, so, thank you, thank you for that. Approval of Personnel Memorandum 22D Instructional.
So moved. Second on that.
We move to second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes, Approval of Personnel Memorandum 22E Instructional.
So moved.
Second on that.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes, I'm not in favor of this until we have a curriculum committee established, we shouldn't be having curriculum writers who don't know what the goals of the school district are from the board and the administration, that is why I proposed it at the time last October, I was told by President Williams that it was out of my purview as a board member to request that, but in fact, I went on the records, reading the policy and the school law, and it is in the purview of the board, so I will not be voting yes on this matter, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any, any other discussion?
I'll be voting in favor of this motion, because it's important that we have the people in place to move forward with our curriculum as soon as possible, thank you.
Thank you. Move to the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Nay.
It so passes, moving on for Approval of Personnel Memorandum 22F, non-instructional, please.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes, now, introduction of personnel. Mrs. Adoma.
Good evening, this day has been a long time coming. During my time in Middletown, I've had the pleasure of working closely with Mrs. Nicole Brookins, especially over the last two years. Mrs. Brookins is an experienced school leader, during eight years in Middletown, Mrs. Brookins has successfully served as an assistant principal for seven years at Presidential Park Elementary School, and one year as an instructional leader for Humanities for grades six and eight. Prior to her tenure in Middletown, she was assistant principal for five years in East Ramapo. Back in November, Mrs. Brookins jumped into the role of interim principal of Twin Towers Middle School without a transition during which, which, during what can be considered one of the most challenging times in public education. Miss Brookins is an out-of-the-bots thinker who continues to work relentlessly to support scholars, teachers, and her colleagues. When we speak with, when we speak, the conversation usually starts off with, hey, Camille, I was hoping we could, followed by a proposal to support our scholars and staff. I could share numerous anecdotes that exemplify how much Mrs. Brookins' leadership is an asset to our district, I am confident that if you ask any scholar, staff, colleague, or family member that has interacted with her, they could attest to this. A few years back, after, after I became principal of Twin Towers Middle School, I told Mrs. Brookins that I am surprised that she was not sitting in my seat. I could not think of a better person to hand over the reins to Twin Towers Middle School, I am happy to present to you the new principal of Twin Towers Middle School, Mrs. Nicole Brookins. Thank you so very much, Pastor Williams, Vice President Tobiasin, board members, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent and Mentor, Ms. Adoma, and just everyone, thank you so very much for this opportunity, having faith in me and, and taking on Twin Towers, I am excited to do so. I also need to throw a shout-out and a thank you to my family, whose ongoing support and unending love gets me through each and every day, to my to my mother, a former superintendent, to my husband, a future administrator, and to my girls, one who missed a lacrosse game to be here, and the other who was a finalist in a spelling bee today, so, acknowledge that. And to all of my esteemed colleagues, my administrative colleagues, we have worked through so many different things, you've challenged my thinking, you've helped me to grow, and I thank you for that. And last, but certainly not least, to my Twin Towers family. Thank you, thank you so much for coming out tonight and just always supporting me, I am grateful to be a part of that family, we've had, we have a lot of challenges to work towards, but we are twin-strong, and that's a different kind of strong, and we are the ones ready to take on the task, so I thank you again for this opportunity, we're ready to get it done, thank you.
President Williams, before we move forward, I was just informed by a member of the community that they were able to re-watch the recording of the whole meeting so far, and that the entire roll call for item 22B was deleted, and it is missing from the recording, we need to take that roll call over for the record, for the public record, please.
So for the public record, the public record is not the video, the public record is the minutes?
I just find that very confusing, it's very strange that our video just cut out just like that, so, for the record again, Mr. Gomez and I both voted no on item 7B, thank you.
Thank you, point of order, point of order, so, so just so, just so we know, the, the executive team, the, the tech team will go back and look, and look, and take care of it, and, and resolve it, they will do it, but they, the record of that vote is in the minutes, which is available.
In this modern day and age, President Williams, people use the video as their public record.
Okay, well, well, thank you, thank you, moving on. Recognitions, community reports, Elks Student of the Month, I'm gonna ask Mr. Perino if you would come, come, we have so many wonderful kids that are here in this, in this room right now, and, and we want to, we want to celebrate them, and we want to celebrate the, the, the things that are going on, and their accomplishments tonight, so, Elks Student of the Month, Mr. Brandon Velazquez.
Velazquez, yeah.
Ask Mr. Perino if he would spearhead this.
Thank you, yeah, I'm going to invite the members of the Elks to come up to the mic, along with Brandon Velazquez, and if Brandon's parents are there, come on up also.
Jen, you want to introduce everyone here? This is the
So, I am Jen, I'm the exalted ruler of the Middletown Elks Lodge, here with me tonight, we have our lecturing night, Jim, and our leading night, Scott, as well as our interguards here as well, Deb, and on behalf of all of the officers in attendance, and everyone at the Middletown Elks Lodge, we are so pleased to present this month, for the month of May, the Student of the Month Award to Brandon Velazquez, so, congratulations, Brandon.
Brandon, one of the reasons Brandon's getting this award, he performed a heroic act, he observed a student, a MHS student having a health problem, and he rendered assistance, and not only that, he waited until the health authorities arrived, and so, congratulations on that, and Dr. Williams, you want to come up and say anything? Come on.
Go ahead, one minute.
Greetings, community, thank you so much for showing out and showing up tonight, greetings to the Honorable Board of Education, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, and all of the board meetings, members, I just want to say congratulations to Brandon, Brandon is being recognized for his outstanding empathy, resilience, and compassion, he almost single-handedly prevented a huge health crisis for another scholar who was born with a very critical health condition, and not only did you have the courage to stay the course, to make sure that our scholar was fine, but you stayed through the medical emergency, and you would not leave his side, and so we thank you, and what's so important is that he didn't even know the scholar, so that's huge, so the entire staff, our nurses, our students, we thank you for your courage and your strength, and for being an example to all of our scholars of what it means to be an empathetic and a lover of all humans, so thank you, Brandon.
Kevin, where would you like this?
Let him say something, you want
Yeah, let him
You want to say, you want to say something?
Sorry.
No, it's all right.
Go ahead, right up there.
Oh, okay.
Right there, go ahead. Come on, come on, get in here, Lynette.
Congratulations, Lynette. Congratulations, Mom and Dad.
And the way that you want to come up? Any board members you'd like to come up? Superintendent, Assistant Chief of Staff?
Yes.
I'm listening, I hear.
I'm going to go down here.
Congratulations.
Dr. Williams is coming back now, recognition of our scholar's success, graduation and beyond. Dr. Williams, if you'd come back to the mic.
So, it gives me incredible pleasure to introduce our scholars tonight. You might notice that many of our scholars have on shirts with names that might be familiar to you. So, I just have to give it up for all of our scholars who are doing such great, amazing work each and every day to make sure that they are honoring the Middletown High School legacy and walking into the road of being trailblazers, not only for our community but the entire world. I would like to thank our College and Career Center. Can you please come up for all the work that they do? It is a huge resource that is at Middletown High School and unique to our district. I don't know really of any other district that has its own college and career center, a center that's focused on making sure that our scholars are college and career-ready. They put on college workshops and fairs for our scholars. Just a couple of weeks ago, we had over 80 colleges come right here to Middletown High School. They do a tremendous job. We have a career fair that we are planning also, and they make sure that our scholars have access to scholarships and that they are taking part in activities that helps them to understand where their strengths are and to move forward and walk into their destiny. So, I'd like to invite Mrs. Reche. I'd like to thank you, Mrs. Paul, and thank you... Come on up. Don't be shy. And I will hand the mic over to introduce our scholars and all of the wonderful accomplishments that they are walking into. Well done, scholars. Very proud of you.
Thanks so much for having us here tonight and some of our kids. You know, we can't bring all 500 and change of our seniors with us, so we did bring a few, just to kind of highlight some of the amazing things that these guys are going to do after high school. Just to give you an idea, if you don't know who we are, I'm Jamie Reche, Danielle Paul, and Lisa Parker. We are what makes up the College and Career Center. Prior to working here at the high school, we all have experience working for colleges. Lisa and I were admissions counselors. We reviewed applications, visited high schools, so now we're here to help students, on the flip side, prepare all of those things for successful applications and careers here after high school. We do one-on-one appointments with students and families. We host a slew of events throughout the year, from our college fair to our career day. We conduct senior interviews with the school counselors. We host alumni college fair. Hopefully, they all come back, and some, because a lot of our seniors are in the crowd. I think it means so much to students in November when their peers come back and they get to hear how the start of their freshman year began. So, those are just some of the things that we do, but I don't want to take up time because tonight is really about them. Most recently, we had a signing day. So, this is a picture of many of them, obviously not all 500. We're still collecting photos. So, they come to the College and Career Center, they get to sign the Class of banner with their plans for after high school. They take picture in their gear. We're having them printed right now by the print shop, so they'll hang outside of the College and Career Center for the next year in hopes to inspire underclassmen, next-year seniors, with all of the amazing things they're doing to kind of set the bar, to illuminate what Middletown does and what they can do. So, I'm going to stop talking now so that they can talk a little bit about themselves and what their plans are for after high school. Okay.
Hi, my name is Angelie Buett. Throughout my years in high school, I've participated in many clubs, like Book Club, Key Club, and NHS. I've also taken part of many Supa classes, and now I'm now committed to University of Buffalo to major in economics with a pre-law track, to hopefully one day be a lawyer.
Hi, I'm Cincere Marsh, and I'm going to the Marines for Intelligence, and I'm really grateful I actually got this job because it's the hardest to get in the Marines, so I'm really grateful that I got the ASVAB scores required and the other tests that I needed to take for it. And a little bit about me, freshman and sophomore year, I did ROTC, which before that, I actually had plans on going to college, but because of that program, it steered me in that direction and really like opened my eyes and made me realize that this is what I wanted to do. And then junior and my senior year, I took law enforcement at Bosse's, and that opened my eyes even wider and realized that I really enjoyed and really wanted to do something to help people. So, I took an ASVAB, got a pretty good score on it, went to MEPS, swore in, and now I'm here. So, really excited.
My name's Adam Mercado. I am going to Meriwether University to continue studying for architecture. A little bit about me, I am currently at Bosse's for Engineering and Architecture. I am a member of NHS, recently graduated, you know? And I really got all my hope because of these three fantastic ladies behind me. They really helped me throughout the process, and I cannot thank them enough. Seriously, thank you.
My name is Sheila. I will be attending Hampton University in the fall. I'm going in as an undeclared major. During high school, I participated in cheerleading all four years of high school. I've done track, I've done basically a little bit of everything all four years. I would also like to thank not only the ladies at the College and Career Center, but all my teachers who have let me talk to them, write letters of recommendation, and simply just listen to me through this whole process, because it was not easy. And I'm excited for these next four years. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone's doing well. I will be attending SUNY Orange. Actually, let me restart. My name's Anthony Ronconcio. I will be attending SUNY Orange for Criminal Justice in hopes of becoming a police officer. I attend Orange Old Sir Bosse's Law Enforcement Program. I graduated from the Youth Leadership at Middletown Police Department. I also want to give a big thanks to Ms. Parker, Ms. Paul, and Ms. Reche for helping me out with financial aid and everything about SUNY Orange. That's it.
My name is Himena Vicente, and in fall of 2022, I will be attending City College as a biology major in the pre-dental route. I'm currently dental assistant student at Orange Old Sir Bosse's, and I'm currently a dental assistant at a local dental office, assisting in dental and surgical procedures. I would not only like to thank the College and Career Center teachers, but also my teachers and coaches that have supported me throughout this four-year run.
Hi, everyone. My name's Anaya Williams. I plan on attending Hampton University to go into education. I would like to thank my mom, Dr. Lynette Williams, and my dad, Mitchell Williams, for always just being support for me. Through my time in NHS, I mean, through my time in Middletown, I have been involved in NHS Senior Enrichment, the Biomed Program. I have over 50 hours of volunteer work, and I have over 44 college credits. Thank you.
Good evening, Ms. Creedon and members of the Board of Education. My name is Kim Kelly, and next year, I'll be attending the University of Albany as a biology major on the pre-med track. Over the last four years at Middletown High School, I have been a part of the project Lead the Way Biomedical Sciences Program, which I'll be graduating from this June. I'm also a member of the National Honor Society and President of Senior Enrichment. I don't only want to thank the College and Career Center for all the help that they've given me, but I want to thank my parents, my friends, my teachers, who have supported me over the last four years and even before that. So, thank you, and I'm excited to come back and visit.
Hi, my name is Sunny Sheen. I'm going to be attending Harvard University in the fall, and I plan on majoring in human developmental and general biology. I would just like to say thank you to the College and Career Center. I would like to say thank you to all my teachers and my friends and family who have helped me like get to this point, because it really does take a village. But, yeah, I just want to say thank you for everyone's support, and have a nice evening.
Thank you so much, community. This is what it's about. This is what Middletown High School produces. I am so proud of each and every one of you. We have military, we have HBCUs, we have Ivy Leagues, we have SUNY Colleges. Impressive. Job well done. Thank you again.
Moving on, we want to recognize one of our scholar athletes tonight, wrestling. Day? Mr. Coach?
Yes, yes.
And from there, you can take it to...
Sure, we'll bring all the... Yeah, we'll go through the whole, we'll go through the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent Adoma, President Williams, members of the Board of Education. Congratulations, Principal Brookins. So happy for you and all of our students. Amazing, amazing job by our kids. Kids always, they never cease to amaze me here. They are amazing, and we're always doing wonderful things. And this is a testament to some of our scholar athletes. We're going to go through that. We had a wonderful afternoon down in the gymnasium. We had many in attendance. At 2:30, we recognized three scholar athlete teams this evening, or this afternoon. We're going to bring them up for a photo. They received their scholar athlete pins from New York State, and they received their certificates already. Just a couple stats in regard to our three teams. We had a varsity wrestling team, a scholar athlete team, varsity girls basketball, and varsity girls indoor track. So, out of, each team had to have 75% of their roster, 90 or above, to reach this pinnacle and achievement for New York State. So, 54 of our winter scholar athletes were 90 or above. So, that is truly, truly amazing. So, I'd like to give a round of applause for that. We're also on our goal. We had five scholar athlete teams in the fall. We have three again in the winter, so we're up to eight. Last year, if you remember, we were here, we had, our record was nine. So, we're more than our way there, so we have our spring yet to go. So, we want to eclipse that number nine, so we're hopeful that that is going to happen this year. So, what I like to do is bring up all of our scholar athletes for indoor track for girls. Come on up. Varsity wrestling, come on up. Varsity girls basketball. I'd like to also have our coaches, Coach Lichtenstein, Coach Hammer, Coach Hippsman, and Coach Diana. I'd like to thank our coaches this evening as well. They keep on raising the standard for our kids, and our kids keep on reaching it, and they keep on raising the bar, so extremely impressed by all these kids and our scholars. Come on up. Actually, we're all going to go. And also, our girls, varsity girls basketball team will take their photo now. We're looking forward to the spring. It's my privilege and honor, as our athletic director at Middletown, to also bring forward to you some of our winter accomplishments, our Section 9 champions, county champions, state qualifiers this evening. I'd like to first start with our indoor track team. They had a tremendous season this year, and like I said a little bit earlier, they keep on raising the bar and the standards for all of our athletes. I'm so impressed with our coaches. And then, our kids keep on attaining, and so we keep on raising the standard, and our kids keep on attaining. And I give that all the credit in the world to our coaches, Coach Hammer and Coach Hippsman. Please come on up.
Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to highlight some of our scholar athletes. This is a great opportunity for our young men and women, and I'm glad we're able to bring this back and recognize these fine student athletes. So, I just want to go through real quick our division champions for this year. We had a few of our boys' division champions. So, our first up is Josh Soder, 55-meter champion. Next up, this young man could not make it tonight, but he was a division champ in two events, the 55 hurdles and a long jump, Jagger Blauvelt. Our next young man had to go to work. He tried to get off, and his boss called him at the last minute. But he is 300-meter division champ, Neville Lemey. Then, we did have a team with majority of these gentlemen win the four-by-two relay, and that's Neville Lemey, Daniel Galeas, who is here. Marquise and Markell Thompson. That same four-by-two team, they worked hard. We had two kids that never did track before, Markell and Marquise Thompson. This was their first year out, and they were able to team up with Daniel and Neville, and they were state and national champion qualifiers in the four-by-two. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, coaches. Next up is our wrestling team. They had tremendous team success and a lot of individual success. It was another tremendous season, and again, raising the standard, raising the bar, and another great example of what we're doing in the athletic department. I'd like to have Coach Lichtenstein come up and talk about the boys.
Better now? All right. Not having the opportunity to compete last year, we were a little nervous this year, not knowing what we would get out of some of these athletes, you know, having taken a year off. And, you know, these three young men were really the anchors of what was a phenomenal season for us. We went 29-6 on the season. We finished the season third in Section 9. We were 28th in the state. You know, and then, these three young men just, you know, they really did a great job along with their teammates, leading the way. You know, it's great that we get an opportunity to honor them here today. So, we'll start with this, our first one. Well, the other thing with these guys is they're all sophomores, which is the greatest part, because we get two more years of these young men. The first young man, he overcame a boat ton of adversity this year, where he had to miss a lot of time on the mat. It wasn't a lot of things that were out of his control, you know, being held out of competitions and stuff. And then, you know, competing behind one of the top wrestlers in the country doesn't make it easier either, and he kept a positive attitude about it. And, you know, he stuck to it every day and did a great job working. And he was the Section 9 runner-up this year at 285 pounds. He was also a NHSCA national qualifier, where he went 3-2 down at the national tournament in Virginia Beach this past year. And, you know, he's going to start the season next year, one of the top-ranked 285-pounders Our next two guys, we're going to talk about them for the next couple of years here, and it's fitting that they're always together. They started in our youth program as third graders, and they've been with our program ever since then, and the success they're having is a reflection of our youth program and the coaches around them. Our first young man was a Section 9 runner-up at 215 pounds. As a sophomore, he was a team captain, and he was one of our team leaders in wins this year. As the year went on, he knocked off a couple of state-ranked opponents. He got to the state tournament, where he had a great showing, came up just short of placing. But this past weekend, he went down to the national tournament in Maryland, where he was the national runner-up in the Mawha Association Tournament. And in a couple of weeks, we're heading up to the New York State Freestyle and Greco-Roman Championships, where he's going to compete to be on the New York State National Team. And he's just doing a phenomenal job for us this year, and that's another sophomore, And our next young man, he's put together quite the resume, and he's only a sophomore. This past season, he won the Section 9 Award for the Most Courageous Award, which was given out. We had our Section 9 banquet at Twin Towers. He was our first sophomore to ever win 100 matches in a career, which is amazing, considering he has two years left. And he's doing it at a weight class, where typically, you wrestle juniors and seniors, and he's been doing it since he was in the seventh grade. Last year, during the COVID season, he was able to go down to the unofficial New York State Championships. He took sixth place. This year, he won his first Section 9 championship, went to the New York State Championships, and took fifth place. A couple of weeks ago, we went down to Virginia Beach, where he took third place in the nation at the NHSCA Nationals. And then, this past weekend, he traveled down to Maryland, where he was the national champion for the Mawha Tournament. I could stand up here for hours and talk about the things that he offers our program and the leadership that he offers our young men, but, you know, he's not much for public attention here. But we're going to, you know, we're going to talk about him for the next couple of years. He's got an incredible future ahead of him, you know, and in this summer, when the colleges start knocking, and they're allowed to start knocking, we're going to start having some real big colleges come looking for him. And he's a great young man, and that's Stefan Monchere.
and school community. This past year, we were able to work and get an esports team into Middletown, and our coaches have done a fantastic job recruiting and retaining a wonderful team, and we're going to honor them this evening. Coach Swyster and Coach McPartland have taken over our program in the winter and for our spring team, and they're going to continue in the fall and winter and spring next year as well. But I'd like for them to recognize their athletes. This year, we had a wonderful varsity team, but our JV team just was excelling, going through the roof, winning tournaments. You're going to see their hardware in a minute, and some of their recognitions in the next couple of seconds here. So, coaches, come on up.
Do you want me to announce the players? All right. So, first, I'd like to congratulate the semifinalist in the National Junior Varsity Tournament we took place in. He was, I'm going to call him the team captain of retros, even though he technically got that title a little bit after the season ended. But he was our semifinalist for our national tournament, the very first that we participated in. So, it was a very great showing from Diego. So, thank you, Diego. But it does not end there, because our other junior varsity squad was actually the grand winners of this junior varsity tournament. They took the whole thing home, bring us this wonderful trophy for our very first esports season. So, I'd like to congratulate Evan Cruz for his wonderful performance. And finally, our wonderful undisputed MVP of our junior varsity squads is David Rojas. So, it is he we can mainly thank for our wonderful trophy. And I'd just like to thank the Middletown community as a whole for giving us this opportunity. It's a really novel thing. It's a really original thing, especially David, for wrapping this in with the athletics department. We have a lot of resources. It's been really great, and I look forward to expanding it with everyone in the future. So, thank you all.
That's it, right? All right. Well, thank you. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you. This is what it's about. It's about these students and these scholars. We're going to move on to our opportunity to address the board. Just before we go there, I do have a statement that I want to make. I want to make a statement. I want to take a moment to address our community here tonight and those watching from home. Well, first, let me say this. Let me say this before I make this statement. The tech team has fixed the issues, and the complete meeting will be uploaded at the conclusion of tonight's meeting to YouTube. So, all right? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did. I did. Community announcements, community reports from our individual board members. I did miss that, didn't I? We're going to take a moment, if we can be as brief as possible, I would appreciate it, but I know we all have something. There's so much to talk about. Mr. Freddie Williams.
Good evening. So, we had scheduled this weekend a Super Saturday event featuring a kids' flag football combine, followed by a tournament of the City of Newburgh Police Department, Middletown Police Department, Orange County Sheriff's Office, and the Middletown District Staff, the defending champs, Middletown District Staff. We rescheduled due to inclement weather. It's supposed to be like 48 degrees and 98% chance of rain or something like that, right? So, we don't want the kids out there and the parents, and it's going to be a real good, you know, community event. We don't want that overcast on our kids. So, we rescheduled for, let me make sure, July 9. It's another Saturday. Kids will be out of school, you know, the teacher will be out, but hopefully, we can get everybody back. And I've gotten contact with other organizations that actually want to add on, so it's going to be even a bigger event. So, that's a good thing. I want to thank Middletown Athletics. Dave coached Kevin Gleason. I've been going back and forth a lot with them on this occasion. So, yeah, the rescheduling date is July 9. I hope all you guys can make it out. It's a free event for kids and parents and friends and family, so it should be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Houston.
Thank you, President Williams. Just a couple of quick announcements. I want to congratulate all of our National Honor Society scholars, and I would like to welcome a new business that's near and dear to my heart to our Middletown community. I love books. Never been much of a Kindle kind of person. I like to hold the book in my hand and look at the illustrations up close. And we have a new bookstore in Middletown called Well-Worn Books. I visited this week, and it is on 130 and 1/2 Wickham Avenue. And the proprietor, Maydi, shared with me that she has quite a few genres, and that includes children's books, which is why I wanted to mention that in this forum. And I bought a little book myself and found that the prices were very affordable. I also want to thank Mr. Kevin Witt for the compilation of dates for May and June, because there are a number of them. They take up a whole page, and your consolidation of them was very helpful. So, thank you for that. And I don't know if that's going to be released to the public, but it might help a lot of our moms and dads out there who are trying to keep their schedules straight, if that could be released. I'm not sure. And finally, I want to give a compliment and shout out to Mr. St. Louis from the high school. He is going to be having a diversity club multicultural evening with food, music, dancing, guest speakers, and much more. That's going to be on Friday, June, the evening of Friday, June 3, in the Middletown High School Gym. And I want to say that it is at 6:30. I'm not positive on the time. But the poster is up on the Middletown Community and Fundraising pages. I'm not sure if Dr. Williams, if you're familiar with what time that begins at, but I want to say it's around 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, but I don't want to tell the wrong thing. 5:00? Oh, thank you for that. Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mitchell Williams.
I just want to congratulate the Middletown community after everything we just saw. It was overwhelming, all the recognitions that I just saw with the kids, and that's it. I mean, it's a beautiful thing. I love it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gomez.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, number one, the full events. I concur in the feelings expressed both by my dear colleague Mitch and Nicole. On April 30, we had, the City of Middletown had the annual Middletown Cleanup, and I know a wonderful and beloved community rhythm, Monsieur de Pue, has spearheaded that for many years. And it's an event where a lot of our children, our students, participate, and moms and dads and families, along with our elected officials in the City of Middletown, in cleaning our streets and making our city look beautiful and sparkle. And again, I want to commend all our children, all our community members, and again, especially Monsieur de Pue, who's had that in our heart to keep Middletown looking good, so that we could have that spirit of "Woots the Owl, give a hoot, don't pollute." And I also want to, I share the sentiments of Mitch, as one of the fellow dad at the National Honor Society Ceremony held at Middletown High School this week. We had our superintendent, along with members of our board there, and I guess the stars of the night were our children, who for many years worked themselves up to that important milestone. And as one of the fellow dads, along with my colleague, Mr. Williams, we could, I'm sure, we're so proud to see our daddy little girls, or the apple of our eyes, get to that point. And it's also an example for all our other students that they too could make a difference and make it there. Hard work, commitment, but it does pay off. And then, today, it was a national day of prayer. Actually, it's an occasion that, if I'm correct, was started by President Ronald Reagan, and families throughout the country gather in different locations, and friends, neighbors, who take a moment to pray for the future of our communities and our country. There was a ceremony in the Village of Goshen, and I had the opportunity to lead the prayer on behalf of our school boards and our court system, be that I serve in both. And it is my prayer that with wisdom and discernment, we will continue to serve our communities.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Bloomingh.
Thank you. I just wanted to echo the congratulations to all of our scholar athletes. That is a tremendous accomplishment. It is the balancing of your life just with school, and then balancing athletics. It is a huge undertaking and requires a lot of organization and time management in order to be and achieve that level. So, congratulations to all of our scholar athletes. Congratulations to our National Honor Society inductees, and I want to also just say Happy Mother's Day to all of the moms. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crescendo.
Basically, the same thing that's been said so far. This is a great time of the year, obviously, with so many awards and recognitions and achievements, the culmination of all the hard work, in some cases of four, well, 12, 13 years, actually, but the last four years of high school. And I remember, I went away to high school in 1966, and at that time, they... And I remember, I, I went away to high school in 1966, and at that time, there were no handheld calculators. They weren't invented yet. We had to use a slide rule. So, things were a little bit different. We didn't have this type of ceremony at my high school. We just were gone. That was it. So, the achievements and the hard work, the perseverance, and there are so many factors in here. Number one, the student, the scholar, needs to be motivated and, and look toward the future. And I know at your age, I wasn't quite as focused as you appear to be today, but also your parents, every staff member, every, every person who works in this district is responsible for you to get to be where you are today. So, I wish, I wish you all the luck in the world. I was looking at the majors. I started off as a business major and took organization and management for like two weeks, and I had to get out of there, and I finally wound up being a special education teacher, which, which was a great career. So, I wish you all the luck in the world, and keep looking forward. Don't stop. Keep this momentum going. You've learned so much, and, and good luck in your future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our media past president, Mr. Perino.
Thank you, Bishop Williams. Mother's Day usually brings plant sales, and we have a good one going tomorrow at MHS. This morning, we picked up almost 300 plants. Dan Higby was kind enough to donate the buses to pick up those plants. So, they'll be on sale tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. Around 10:00 a.m., we have to get them all marked first, but they're beautiful plants. They came farm fresh from Ricky Polarchik's farm, who used to work for the district, as a matter of fact, worked almost 20 years for the district. Put me on a four-minute timer, guys. I don't want to go over. Okay, good. Take a little, couple seconds off that, because I've been on that. I wanted to set an example. So, all right, that's one, one sale. The other sale is a member, the Middletown Fire Company, the Excelsors Fire Company, which I'm a member of, and the Ontarios Fire Company, which one of the members of the Board of Education will soon be a member of, is holding a plant sale. Hear that, Mitch? The Ontarios Fire Company?
Yes.
Okay, good. Holding a plant sale. And the plant sale is both at Central Firehouse and the truck house at North Street where the Ontarios are housed. So, you have two good opportunities to buy great plants for Mother's Day, so get over there and take advantage of it. The other item I want to start to talk about, I want to start to talk about all the musicals and plays that have been going on in the district. Just a word about the musicals. The music department, our music department is, along with many of our other departments, very outstanding. For the eighth year in a row, we have been voted, Middletown School District has been voted one of the best communities for music education. There are approximately 13,000, almost 13,598 school districts in United, in the United States, and we are one of the 798 that was afforded this honor. This honor acknowledges schools, districts across the U.S. for the commitment to and support of music education. It is quite the honor and, excuse me, and you really can see that in the performance at all the musicals. Just talking in general about the musicals, they all demonstrated a great deal of work on the part of the staff and students. I thought at MHS, it was a great idea to have the jazz band playing in the foyer before the musical started. That was a nice idea. I'll talk specifically about the musicals on my next go-around, but I just want to say, I want to acknowledge the custodial staff and the buildings and ground staff, which I'll, again, I'll do next time. All the schools will, were clean and well-kept. They did, the guys and gals do a great job. I can usually tell, I have a test. When I go into a school, I can usually tell how that building is running. I call it the Chisholm Moore Test, which dates back many, many decades. I'm not going to say I'm only 14 seconds, and I want to keep with a time limit, so I'll talk more about the musicals at a, the next meeting. Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Beizen.
Thank you, Pastor Williams. On Tuesday evening, Superintendent Creedon, Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Tuttle, President Williams, and myself attended the Common Council meeting where they did a presentation of the budget, but I have to tell you that the acclamates that we received for the cooperation between the City of Middletown and the school district was very heartwarming. At that time also, and I see she's in our audience tonight, Mrs. DePew, Mr. DePew was recognized. I understand she's been doing the cleanup for over 10 years, and this year was the largest with 500 volunteers. Is that correct? So, thank you for your efforts in that. And last but not least, as many people know me, I need my prepared statements, but this is Teacher Appreciation Week, and many times, I've said to our teachers, you never know which students crossing the threshold into your classroom will be the next doctor, lawyer, or maybe perhaps a governor, or even a president, but you daily challenge and motivate our students in your class to do their very best. You open their minds with wisdom, with style, and with grace, and it's always evident that you have their best interest at heart. You get to influence a child's life in a very positive way, really, as only a teacher can do. So, I, and I'm sure all of my fellow board members, acknowledge and thank you for just, for not just during Teacher Appreciation Week, but for every day, for all that you do for our students. So, I say thank you, and we certainly need to acknowledge our teachers, not only Teacher Appreciation Week, as I said, but every day. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'll just co-sign everything that has been, already been said. I don't have anything else to add, other than my appreciation to all of our students and scholars, especially those that came tonight. Very proud of them. Many of them we've known since they were children, since they were young children, and so very proud of them. That's all I have tonight on that. We're going to move on.
Mr. President, this coming Saturday, Tana Walker will be hosting Touch a Truck. I think it's going to be in 211 for all the young kids who want to know what it's like to touch a truck, the different types of trucks.
Yes.
Hosted by the Tana Walker.
And I forgot one thing also, and perhaps you can answer my question, President Williams. When will the candidates, Meet the Candidates Evening?
I was going to announce that a little later.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to announce that a little bit later, so we'll definitely get to that, but I will.
I think, just Mr. Gomez, they sent an email out this afternoon that Touch a Truck got rescheduled due to the pending inclement weather, so they rescheduled it for Saturday, May 21st.
Thank you for the correction, so there you have it, May 21st.
Awesome. Thank you. Let's, let's move on to our opportunity to address the board. Just before we do that, I do want to make a statement. I want to take a moment to address our community here tonight and those watching from home. We know some of you are here tonight or tuning in online regarding a personnel matter. We want to affirm our commitment to our scholars, our families, educators, staff, and entire school community. Appropriate certification by the New York State Education Department is required. Our action this week was required by law. Again, we are required by law to employ individuals who hold valid New York State certifications for their position. This action is not only impacting one employee, but it's impacting multiple employees, and it is required by law. I would like to remind everybody here tonight that we do learn through feedback. We grow through feedback. However, we're not going to allow personal attacks, insults, or improper language, but we will support respectful dialogue tonight. Thank you. We're moving on to our opportunity to address the board. You have, you can come to the mic, you can sign in. You have four minutes, and, and we'll go on from there.
Oh, is this, is it good? Can everybody hear me? Okay, awesome. Good evening, everyone either at home or here with us in person. My name is Emily Figaroa, and about one month ago, I addressed the board with an issue very near and dear to my heart, women in STEM at Middletown High School. Now, last month, I addressed the gender disparity and how low our numbers were for female representation, and the outcome of me saying that, I did receive a lot of attention and support with that issue, so I'm here to discuss that. So, I am a huge advocate for STEM, for kids in STEM as well, and with that, exposure is everything. I have partnered with Dr. Williams, Mr. Connell, Mr. Follinsby, and Ms. O'Connor to bring my vision for our community to life. As of right now, I'm working on bringing back a women in STEM club with the help of Ms. O'Connor for our lovely ladies in MHS. In addition to this, I am also working with the Parks and Rec, along with Dr. Williams, Mr. Follinsby, and Mr. Connell, to create a week-long experience for our moody kids as little engineers. I have many different activities planned out in an order for the kids to go through their own version of Project Leadways Engineering Academy. I want to bring attention to the amazing progress myself and my team has made, but I also would like the chance to present my project at the next board meeting you have. So, rather than you all listening to me, you could have a slideshow presentation with pictures, dates, and much more information than anything spoken in four minutes. I cannot stress enough the importance of exposure to our community. I will keep attending the board meetings to keep our community updated and hopefully inspire those watching. Thank you for your time.
Could that be arranged for her in the next meeting?
We'll respond.
That would be great.
We actually will respond.
Good evening. My name is Bishop James Rollins. I live here in Middletown, have for many years. I want to start first and foremost by congratulating Principal Nicole Brookings. I know she's gone but for, on her new appointment, as well as congratulations to all of our National Honor Society students, and congratulations to the College and Career Center and the college-bound students in our high school, especially those who are near and dear to my heart. It's great to see those going to some HBCUs that's down in my neck of the woods in Hampton, Virginia. And so, also, congratulations to the student athletes for their hard work and also their achievements. I came to the last meeting, and we had a situation over at our middle school, and I raised an issue, and I certainly want to make sure that I follow up to see, has it been addressed? There was an article about it in the local newspaper, the Hudson Valley Post, and it's also noted some statistics that were extremely disconcerting regarding 27% of the Monhagen Middle School students scored at or above the proficient level for math, and around 26% scored at or above the level for reading, according to U.S. News and World Reports. It is stated that the Monhagen Middle School ranked 914 out of 1,219 New York middle schools. Schools are ranked on their performance and state-required tests, graduation, how well they prepare students for high school, and so I'd like to know, I did raise the issue the last time, and I'd like to know whether or not anyone followed up to address that, because again, with all the great things we saw tonight, I certainly want to make sure that that is not overlooked. Second thing is, of course, I am completely appalled at the fact that we are having a Meet the Candidates meeting, and the public is not invited. It is absolutely ludicrous for the public to not be there. We have presidential elections, and they literally have people there, and they pass them, they can ask them, ask questions. And so, I'll say to this that we cannot and we will not stand idle, and we will not watch and sanction the politicized manipulation of authority. We must demand a responsible deployment of invaluable assets, such as minority educators and students who passionately practice their craft. Every minority in this room, stand up now. Let me see every minority stand up in this room. Every minority in this room, stand up. Now, let me see the minorities in this room that support, I mean, those that support the minorities, let me see you stand up. So, then, that tells me that everybody in the room is, is on the same page. And so, what I say to that, you can be seated, the future of our community in America is perched upon the shoulders of people who care enough to not just speak up, but to speak truth to power and hold them and those in positions of power accountable for using their power with integrity and wise discretion. I didn't say nah, I didn't say discretionary integrity, but integrity with discretion. We remind you that those serving, that they cannot and will not be allowed to manipulate the voices of those who trust them with their democratic voice, and that is namely their vote. You will not be allowed to sit in a seat of authority unchecked while the lives and education of our children lies in the balance. Student support is a multifaceted necessity that must be met head-on without the interruption of personal agendas and ignorance of minority cultures. I am demanding a solution-oriented, culturally sensitive approach to educating our children. I will not accept nor allow the strategic manipulation, manipulation of power to masquerade as expertise nor care or compassion. You, you expect this community to entrust its hard-earned dollars in a budget to a board who cannot be trusted enough to be honest with us about the operation of our school district? Thank you very much. Thank you.
Many of you may know me as Drew, but my name is actually Andrew Moore. I come to you this evening to express my displacement with this district. As a parent of three young children who attend Presidential Park, I come here tonight to speak for the voices that are unable to speak for themselves publicly. As many in this room tonight, education is certainly a priority for me. I posted a quote today. I was hoping to be able to say it before you guys decide to make a decision. In a space between yes and no, there's, there's a lifetime. It's a difference between the path you walk and the one you leave behind. It's the gap between who thought, who you thought you could be, who you really are. It's the legroom for the lies that you will tell yourself in the future. When I thought I couldn't be more surprised, boom, here goes another eye-opener, another eye-opening tragedy. As a community member, a high taxpayer at that, an involved father, a member of Because It Matters 24/7, let me give you a little bit of the weekly highlights that happened that was not mentioned today. There was an NBK Boys event that took place, basketball game versus NPD. After that, proceeded with a dinner at O'Airy, where the community and the, and the students had an opportunity to bond and share ideas. We also hosted a voter registration for the youth. As you know, this district has yet to have done that, when many of the outside districts have publicly had spaces where students can actually preregister the vote from E16 and up. We took care of that this weekend, and we look forward to doing more. Last time I had the opportunity to address this board, I spoke about the inequalities and the lack of humanity that the district administration has for this community, those who seek opportunities to be a part of it. This district is made of a close to over 89% black and brown students. We need a representation that reflects such, that can help guide our youth to new heights and new levels. Tonight, we decided to abolish two positions and two key pillars that the student body rely on, that respect heavily. Many of you guys voted yes. Many of you guys voted yes to those decisions, and that's something that you got to live with going forward. Moving forward, you say, right, moving forward. How is this moving forward by tearing the hearts of the youth? Who value these individuals not only for saving their lives, but actually giving them an opportunity to see the path ahead. It was mentioned at the city hall meeting this week that the district, when discussing their budgets, we plan to keep staff intact. Yet again, another lie. We plan to bring school value. I'm not sure how these decisions are bringing school value, it's actually tearing down this community. For someone that's been here for a year and a half, I have been blindsided by the belief that I decided to bring my family up here from the city and with the hands of those who don't actually even live in this district, making the decisions for the sake of our children. It's appalling to me that you guys move this way. I'm actually honored to the fact that I didn't get a chance to actually sit down in one of these seats to be able to be a part of this district. But I'm making it an effort, my conscious effort, with all my resources, and those who know me know the resources that I have. I'm making it my business to make sure that I put my, my, my feet on this ground to protect the teachers that are unheard, those who are silenced, those who are afraid to step up because of the actions and retaliatory actions that you guys decide to take against, against those who don't decide to speak up. That comes to an end, and May 17th you will see.
Hello, board members. Ms. Creedon, nice to see you again. I used to actually go to Maple Hill when you used to be president. My name is Andrew Cruz and I actually go to the school here in Middletown and I have a younger brother who actually goes, who's actually in the Middletown District. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the problems going on in both of the schools and maybe how to fix it and make some issues, you know, known public. Starting off, the whole ID rule is very annoying and I, and I'm going to be honest here, I do understand its safety concern, yet the staff, I've noticed, have done nothing about it. For some groundwork here, I lost my ID a few months ago and asked to have it reprinted. On Monday, I was told where to get a new ID printed for me, yet the staff proceeded to use the machine as a doorstop and I've never, and I wasn't able to receive my ID that day. Even going to the lunch, there was no one at the actual machine. And this actually brings me to my next topic here, which is the communication you have with the students and parents. Eventually, I did get a new ID after having going, after having to go through the rigorous trouble of having my lovely mother who was standing right behind me, that she had to call up my house and my house was told my mother that they've had my ID since September and that I was notified it was printed. Yet I've never have received an email stating that it was printed. This kind of shows me that there's kind of a lack of transparency in the school in regards to the communication and what's going on inside of it. A very common issue I've also seen, my poor mother have to deal with is, with the transparency with the middle school. My brother, as I've told you before, actually goes to the school, middle school here in the district. He, he gets sent off, he gets sent off, sorry. He gets sent to the office pretty often, but yet my mother is not being told why that reason is. And eventually, the schools alter the details in order to get their point and to get that their, that his situation favorable to them. We really need more transparency in both of the schools. It's, I think it's a really horrible thing that we're not being told why or I'm not being told nor my mother is being told why her son, my brother, is being caught in the main office. Another small detail I noticed also was the staff not being notified about extracurricular activities. Personally, I went out to receive an item, my friend was holding for me, and as I returned to the front, I was told by the lady in the window, "What is esports and why did you leave?" As I answered both of their questions, she immediately got upset like she had something better else to do, more important than letting someone who actually had practice and wanted to actually play that day. I just want staff to know more that, about the esports program so that we don't kind of run into that issue again. Another action I've also witnessed was hateful misconduct between teachers and students. There is a place to report that, yet every single incident that is reported gets swept under the rug as a tiny little mistake. We as students need our voices to be heard loud and clear. We, we need to take a stand here and say, "This is happening to me and I want you to stand side by side with me." As a student, I fear my voice won't be heard by staff and big personnel of the school. Yet I choose my voice here with hope. Stand with me and make a change to the school. I don't want to make it more than a prison than it already is. But I hope my voice brings an attention to fix these problems and give a clear-cut answer to parents and students and how to address things. We don't want to hear a cookie cutter answer, but we want acknowledgement, apologies, and actual responses instead of ones that resemble disinterest or that you could care less about this school and its happenings. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Is the light on, is the light on?
Yes, it is, it's on. This evening, I'll be reading a letter from my daughter. She actually sends it over to the district clerk, but I'm not thinking that I would be here to read it for her, so I'm going to read it for her. My name is Daisha Enriquez, and I'm reading the letter from my daughter. "As a former student at Middletown High School, during my time there, even through the good and the bad days, I always knew that I had a cer, there had certain staff members that would always be there to uplift me, empower me, and guide me. However, as I've left the school district and taken a step back, I've seen the curtains slowly begin to fall, exposing many truths. The most prevalent truth being that this school district values the students and staff in more ways than one. It is alarming to me as this district feels the need to strip away members of its staff that have had the most impact in its students. Staff members who have given these young men and women hope, guidance, and security. For me, while I attended Middletown High School, Anthony Williams was one of the individuals who I looked up to whenever I felt unsure of myself about how well I would perform on tests or even in my next moves in life after high school. He helped me realize that I would choose, I could choose any path I wanted as long as I had a plan, a goal I was always willing to achieve. He always gave me hope and he always believed in me. It should be known that for those four years, those four development years, developmental years are crucial. These teenagers are slowly surely learning themselves, learning their strengths, their weaknesses, molding their careers, molding their mentalities, and shaping how the world views them and how they believe the world is viewed. These students, they need people in these buildings that care, not individuals that would clock in for a paycheck. These children deserve guidance, they deserve all the advice and wisdom they can get from those inexperienced. Why take away an individual from the school building who hosts events for young men so that they can stray away from making mistakes that will change their whole lives and instead of bonding together as brothers, define what society says they would be? Why take away an individual that builds these students, that doesn't let them fall through the cracks and instead fights to keep them on board to graduate? Why rob these children of having the ability to represent, to have representation of someone who may look like them? Why fail these students by taking away someone who inspires them and keeping them in the building that spreads false hope and tells these students that they have, there will be nothing other than a very statistic? Yes, the school district failed me, but in making this decision, I feel, I firmly believe you've chosen unwillingly to fail these children and the rest to come." Now I want to be able to have a minute left on the clock. About a year ago, I identified myself through a very delicate matter for my daughter and how the district failed my daughter. I will say in the time being, some of it has been corrected. But one of the reasons why I'm actually running is because in order for me to ensure that this doesn't happen to another family, I need to make sure that I take a seat because I need to ensure that the policies and the practices are in place. We are taking adults out of these buildings that these children trust. I can't imagine what that feels like. A lot of these adults have spoken up in the past coming months and you can't help but understand and feel that it's a form of retaliation. So I'm here to tell you today that I'm committed to my child and my other child that's currently in the district, but I'm committed to your children as well. I'm committed to the staff that shows up every day. I'm going to go a little past that clock. I'm committed to the staff that shows up every day with the morale being low in the school district and with the courage to lead our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to, I do want to, I want to just clarify something too, just before we, before we move forward. And I understand that we're in, we're in a budget season and an election season and I did not stop, I did not stop, stop anybody. But we are not, we are not, this is not the forum for us to, to campaign. And I, I appreciate your statements, but I just wanted to make sure I clarify that for, as we're moving forward. This is not the forum for any of us to campaign for any, any of our positions or anything of that nature. It's not allowed during this particular forum. Thank you.
Hello, good evening, board. I had no intention of coming tonight, but after my 15-year-old who was watching the meeting told me, "Mom, I'm not going back," I became concerned. She said, "I already lost one person in the school that I can go to, now I'm losing another. I have one person left that I know I can go to, will they take her away as well?" Your mission statement and your vision statement says that we're a diverse school district. 75% of the children that attend this school are black and brown children. I remember standing up here screaming three years ago for diversity within the school district and it seems that for every one diverse person we put in, we take out three. It is affecting our children when they don't see people that look like them and give them the confidence that they can go ahead and be in these places as well. Our kids have went through a traumatic experience of suffering a pandemic, having life and normalcy and everything ripped away from them as they know it. So when they have a teacher, and I'm sure if I asked each and every one of you on this board, "Do you remember your favorite teacher or your favorite person in school who was such a big influence?" You could probably remember back as far as kindergarten, the most simplest things. The staff in these schools, you know, they play such a huge part in our children's lives. And to have them ripped away and not even answer, not even the transparency as of to why. We want our children to, you know, conduct themselves as adults in this district and, and make wise choices. So let them be the voice in the district as well. Really listen to them, listen to their cries, listen to our children. I don't think at 15 years old, my daughter should have to say that. She refuses to come back to this school district because they are more worried about appearances, cosmetic appearances than they are about the students and what they are going through. She attends the high school, she said it is a high volume of people that are here in the school and yet these individuals still make the time for her when she needs them, when she hits a dark place. I have a 15-year-old sitting in her room right now hysterical crying because she wants to know, "How is this school district helping me, mommy? You go and you fight and you try to get things done." But the worst part about what she said was, "I'm not a DAP child. What about my brothers?" And that brings me to my next point, when the school was shut down. I did not get to come to the last meeting to speak about it, but all of our DAP community was left out in the cold. They go outside of school, outside of the district. Why did our children that went outside of district that are special needs as, you know, the school district classifies them? Why did they have to suffer? There was no transparency in regards to that. I had tons of parents, tons of parents contacting me, asking me, "Why can't my kid go to school?" You know, if it takes a village, we sit here, we say, "It takes a village, let's help this one, let's help that one." If there was something that you guys need from the parents that we need to step up, then you have to reach out to us and let us know. You know, it's that old saying, "A closed mouth doesn't get fed." Our children are in a society right now that is not normal. Our kids are beating on each other in the school. My 15-year-old will not go to the bathroom because she's afraid of getting jumped at 7:30 in the morning going to the bathroom. You know, we need to hold parents accountable. You'll want to call CPS on a parent who doesn't send their kids for three days, but you won't hold the child accountable and the parent for vaping in the bathroom. We have to do better as a school board. We are going to lose our children over unsaid things, things that are put under the rug. These are, this is our future, these are our future doctors, lawyers, presidents. We need to pour into them the same way our elders poured into us. And I'm really pulling on you, I'm putting a demand on you. We have to do better, even if you have to involve the community. Listen to us, really listen to us, not just here, but listen to us. But also at the same note, conduct yourselves accordingly. Okay? My daughter told me to tell you, "Thank you for being boisterous." She did say that, but she said, "Conduct yourself accordingly." Because you're a leader, so you're an example for me, so conduct yourself accordingly. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, I'm Mrs. Glickman and I am the junior class advisor. And as such, it, we, I am involved in planning the prom. So our ticket sales have been a little bit slow and the hall needs some numbers by next week. So I am going to offer the opportunity or the option for parents to come out to the high school on Monday and Wednesday of next week in the evening from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., okay? So from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., if you do not feel comfortable with sending your child to school with the money for prom, you can come in the evening and I will be there right at the front desk, all right? Also, I have to put out there that the New York State Regents exams are ongoing and are going to happen in the past, just so you know, parents, and you understand that our students need to pass certain number or certain exams in order to graduate. So from Monday through Thursday, there are Regents review courses after school. There are two sessions. There's a session from 2:30 to 3:30, in case they have to say, say they go 2:30 to 3:30 to maybe a global Regents review. And then from 3:30 to 4:30, maybe they can go to an Algebra I Regents review and our school is offering busing at 4:30, all right? So please encourage your students, if they're taking a Regents exam, to stay. It really makes a difference, really makes a difference. Thank you so much, have a good night.
Thank you, Fran. Anybody else?
Good evening, board. Amy Pasta, Mitch, everybody else that I know, Dr. Williams. Dr. Williams. My name is Quincy. I currently work at Mohegan High Middle School. When I look around me, I'm a part of a community now in Middletown that I'm very happy with, and I'm happy to be a part of. None of this would have been possible without Anthony Williams, a good friend of mine who I grew up with. A quote that he goes by is, "Success is measured by the people you help." In my time in Middletown, I've opened a restaurant. I've been able to do culinary programs within the school. I've been able to be a part of an MBK program, assist on Sundays and Saturdays with different programs within the community that I'm very excited to be a part of. And that type of individual, Mr. Williams is, in my eyes, there's no titles you can give a person to define character or to define purpose. So I just hope, as a community, we can figure out a solution together to be able to put more people in place and position to find resources for our community and assist each other. But I must say, it's hard to come by people like that and individuals who are that impactful. But in closing, I think about, you know, sometimes I watch pastors live, and something that just came to mind is how pastors sometimes say, you know, "Your destiny isn't defined by man, it's defined by God." So I'm going to have God do his thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Q.
I'll write that later, do the time. My name is Magdalia, and I'm new to Middletown. I have a daughter in middle school. We just moved to Middletown from the city. And I'm here in support of Anthony Williams. I know him from the city. He was the guidance counselor in the high school that my older daughters attended in the city. And he was a father figure to them. He was, to this day, he's still a mentor to them. My oldest is 25 years old, and she still calls on him. I have another one who's 24 years old and still calls on him. And I was really looking forward for him to mentor my youngest now, who's in middle school. And just to hear that that won't be a possibility is really heartbreaking. So I'm just here to support and that, you know, I don't understand all the details that's going on again because I'm new and I'm still learning. So I just hope that it's not what I think it is and that there's something more to the story than what I'm hearing.
Good evening. This is my first time speaking. I've attended several meetings. So first, for the positive, Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Our teachers have been working very, very diligently to get our students caught up. Thank you. I have two students in elementary school. It has not been easy. Homeschooling was not a walk in the park, but our teachers have gotten them back on their feet, so I'm really appreciative of that. It was great to see the scholars tonight and all their successes, and I look forward to my two little ones. We have a very long journey in Middletown. What I will say is that I was very disturbed this evening. I have been to several meetings where they can get contentious, and I understand that. Everyone wants to get their word in. But I will say, when you have a room full of students, it's really just not the appropriate time for that behavior from the adults that they're looking to for guidance. And you guys are supposed to be their role model. So I understand that there are disagreements, but it was a little embarrassing, and if you could see the young people in the room shaking their heads at what went on tonight. So moving forward, I don't exactly know how the agenda works. I'm new to the district. I would suggest that if you have a room full of students, check your pride at the door and make sure we're talking to each other with care, consideration, and respect. There's a lot going on in our district. There's a lot going on in our society, and our kids are seeing all of this. You can't turn the TV on without, you know, people just yelling and screaming at each other. So I don't think that this is the appropriate place for them to see that as well. Moving forward, I have a 10-year-old that is entering Mohegan Middle School next year. He's excited, I'm terrified. I've seen lots of things going on. And while the issues aren't endemic to Middletown, it is going on everywhere. I'm unfortunately on the Orange County Moms Facebook page. There's lots of schools that are having issues. I would really like to see Middletown try to figure out what we're going to do. I know there's free speech. I know that social media is just something that our nation hasn't even caught up to with our young people in explaining how important what they put on social media is. I was made aware of an Instagram account that is particularly for Middletown. I won't go too far into it because I believe it's been shared with everyone on the board. But I want to know what we're going to do about the behavior. I too am scared for my son to go to the bathroom because of what I've seen on this, on this website. I don't know if anything can be done to maybe, I brought it up in another meeting, one of the Talk It Out Tuesdays, to maybe create some kind of document that needs to be signed by parents and students for responsibility on social media and that their, their actions on social media expands to them being a community member of the school and of the community or just education. But something has to be done because it's really frightening. And like I said, it's not just a problem in Middletown, but I would really like to see some solutions proposed to figure it out. Thank you so much, everyone, have a great night.
I don't know how to sign in here.
I think she hasn't, she hasn't in. You can speak and sign in later.
Hi, good evening. My name is Susan Depew. I live in Middletown. I'm a Middletown High School graduate, 1962, so you can guess how old I am. I'm here to thank Middletown students for helping to clean up Middletown last week. If you didn't come, that's fine. You can continue doing what some of your classmates did. For those who came and cleaned up Middletown, kudos to you. Thank you so very much for picking up the garbage that other people threw out. It appalls me. At my age, I've been on this haunt for 10 years trying to get people to clean up after themselves. It's not your job or my job to clean up, but we live in a society that we need to take care of. And if we don't take care of where we live in our own home, in our own town, then it says a lot about us. So I'm not here to preach you. I'm here to thank you for taking care of Middletown. It's where we live. It's where we shop. It's where you go to school, where I went to school. So thank you very much for being part of Middletown. For those of you who are new, it's a great place to live. I've lived here most of my life. I've lived a few other places in Orange County. But I thank you, if you participated in the cleanup of Middletown, thank you so very much. If you didn't, just clean up after yourselves and bug somebody if they're dropping something because it might be me who's bugging you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. President? Excuse myself with my colleagues and the community to pick up a child at work. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Greg Joinham. Resident citizen of Middletown, just wanted to say to everyone tonight, first of all, congratulations to the Scott athletes and everyone who got recognized earlier and to the teachers who supported their lives. The young lady just spoke about cleaning up the streets of Middletown. Let's look at the hearts of Middletown too and see what we can do about cleaning up some of the hearts and some of the things that we're doing that we know can be fixed. Yes, you talked earlier, Pastor, about the law and the law. We know everybody's here supporting the brother. And I think that his accolades and the work that he's done and the recognition he's received inside and outside of Middletown supersede whatever issue is with the licensing that's in place right now. And I think that there's a medium that you can come to so that this brother can be honored, continue to do his work as well as others in the community. There's some way to fix this issue. There's some way to rectify it. You just have to be willing to do that. And you of all people know that everybody should be given a second chance nor another chance, or another chance, or another chance because we all in our lives have been given opportunities to rectify things that may need correcting. Number one. Number two, the same brother that we're talking about was honored, put in a Hall of Fame at his undergrad school. He was put in a Hall of Fame there and came back here and put in a hallways of shame in a neighborhood where he lives, works, put his time, energy, and effort into. And that's a shame. So we might be cleaning up the streets. We also have to clean up some of the issues that are prevailing in our communities right now, and we know that they exist. We just stop stunting around like we don't exist, and let's do something about it. And we can do it. And we can fix it, and we can win. But you got to be willing to meet people halfway, take it a hard stance, and not be willing to see what's going on and address the situation. People get tickets all the time. The law says it's against the law. They also get time in order to correct the ticket or pay the ticket or pay the fine and move on. They don't get fired, they don't get put in jail forever, they don't get a life sentence because they got a ticket. And that's what it appears to be in situations now. Last but certainly not least, I believe in my brother's keeper. And the six milestones talk about Obama put in place that young men deserve a second chance at life and ought to live in a safe environment. Let's do that for the administrators of color in this district so that they can have a safe place to live and raise their families and a second chance at educating the babies in the school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bianca Baptiste, and I am a parent in this district. I here, like many people here, I am here to support our administrators who are being targeted by this board and administration. You know, we complain a lot at this mic about how our kids are violent and aggressive in the schools, and we don't know what to do. Why are they bullying each other? But then I watch this board, and there are so many bullies sitting in these seats. And these are who, this is who our kids are watching. Just like another parent came up here and said, "These kids are watching you, they're laughing at you." You know, it's ridiculous. And we're bullying our staff and our administrators, who these kids care about, who they need. It's not about you. And if you like them or dislike them or think that they should have this job, it's about us and what we want and who we want to care for our children, who these children are telling you, coming to this microphone out of their own mouth and telling you that they want in that seat. These people are overqualified for the positions that they were in. So there's no way that you're going to stand here and insult our intelligence by telling us that the law told you that this is what you have to do. Okay? Because I look around at the people who support, and we are human resources professionals, we are lawyers, we are administrators in other school districts, we are teachers. I look around this room. We are not uneducated people. Stop trying to insult our intelligence. It's ridiculous. Every meeting, after every meeting, we come and say the same thing. We're not going to stand for it. We're not going to stop. So stop trying to insult us. We know. You're not going to tell us that. These people are overqualified. They are qualified to do the job of any of you. Don't tell me you had to do it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those who don't know, Ray McNamara, Sr., 270 Pocatello Road. Once again, I find myself in the unenviable position of stepping to this podium to defend a man that I have a lot of respect for, that I feel is being discriminated against by this board and this district. It is unbelievable to me that when we have administrators that are doing the right thing by our children, they are attacked. And then we have administrators, staff, and faculty that are afraid to stand up here because they're afraid of the repercussions that are going to come to them. I have to tell this board as a whole that we, as taxpayers, are tired of this. I'm going to try and keep this as clean as I can, but I am also going to be frank and honest with you. My opinion is that I am looking at Amy's Army making a last-ditch effort to do everything that they want to do before May 17th, when we get three new people on that board that are going to do the right thing. That is not the time to do this. I stood at this microphone tonight to defend Coach Williams. I stood at this microphone several times to defend Omar Perez. And this is a board that is constantly preaching to us about the diversity and the makeup of our community and how the administration should reflect that. Can you please tell me why every time I stand at this microphone is to defend somebody whose skin is darker than mine? I'll be the one to say it. Why is that? That's all I got.
All right, my name's Andre DeRosa. I'm a teacher for 13 years here. And I'm going to tell the truth. I always come here and I always tell the truth. I'm highly concerned with the actions of this board and the superintendent. We relied too about the process of how our new superintendent would be selected. All the reasons that I have heard from every member as to how our superintendent was chosen was inadequate. One of the many questions I have is, what was the rush? Was it the upcoming board elections possibly changing the dynamic of our board, possibly not resulting in the approval of our current superintendent? Everything was done behind closed doors, which is never a good sign. People have openly come out expressing their concerns. With our new superintendent being chosen, we have established that she is one of the main proponents of the bully culture that exists and extends to some of Middletown's upper administration.
Listen, Mr.--
I'm not using any names. We have further seen--
Excuse me. Excuse me, sir. Point of order.
Let him speak.
What am I saying?
Point of order. Point of order. I'm going to, stop the clock, stop the clock, stop the clock. Mr. DeRosa? Mr. DeRosa? You are, we've already had this discussion, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask again. I'm asking you to be respectful. The way that this, this is that, what you're saying right now is not acceptable.
I don't agree with you, Pastor Williams.
It doesn't matter.
It does matter. I'm an equal voice on this board as you are, and I don't think he's doing anything wrong.
Excuse me. At this point, at this point, I'm adding--
For the record, this is why I spoke like I did earlier for those of you who don't know me.
Ask for an executive session.
No, let him speak.
Respectfully--
An executive session?
He has done nothing wrong, but state what he wants just because this board doesn't like what he has to say.
Mrs. Houston, respectfully, point of order. I'm asking respectfully, point of order. I'm adding time back to Mr. DeRosa. He has, he has his time to speak. We've had the discussion. The derogatory, the derogatory statements, if you--
On these statements, not derogatory.
Not derogatory statements. And we have never had a conversation about anything. We've had a conversation about me using names, and I have not used a name, and I will not use a name. All right? I'm going to tell the truth. That's what I'm here to tell. If you guys can't handle it, that's not my problem. But I'm going to tell the truth, as God is my witness. Can I continue? Can I continue?
May continue.
Because the only person that's judging me, the only person I'm scared of is God. That's it. You need to, every single person here, everybody needs to humble themselves and listen. Can I speak? Because it's going on. It's going on, I wasn't brought back.
That's what happened to me last time. Point of order.
Mr. DeRosa, continue to speak.
No, I want the clock to go back.
Take the, take the clock to three minutes and 30 seconds.
We have further seen that who you know is what is important. This was further confirmed when one of the board members-- This was further confirmed when one of the board members stated more than once that we cannot trust applicants, applicants' resumes and references. Something that at the high school level, we encourage our students to build resumes. What type of message are you sending to our students? The purpose of a thorough search with many different groups such as students, community, teachers, and administrators is to make sure that the applicant has the proper experiences, expertise, qualifications, and most importantly, will have a healthy, positive dynamic with those he or she works with. Every board member here knows that this district deserves and could find a more qualified, progressive, effective superintendent that can build a genuinely healthy, positive, and productive relationship with our staff. Somebody who builds up their staff. Instead, we now have a public relations expert that has created a false narrative of equity and inclusiveness. We have seen a master manipulator at work directing and/or allowing administrators and colleagues of mine to be dragged through the mud with mental scars as the result. Witnessing this treatment and being in this toxic environment affects all around to be mentally drained and anxious. This is not a productive state for anybody to be working in. I have some questions. Why have I witnessed Mr. Perez, a beloved dean, dragged through the mud twice in one academic year with students and community members here to testify his effectiveness this last time? It was an unanonymous, unanonymous decision. It was not a non-anominous-- It was not an unanonymous decision for him to put, to be put on leave. That is disturbing. How about Ms. Yaya Williams, our K-12 coordinator of mathematics? After many educators who worked with her came forward to praise Ms. Yaya Williams for her amazing ability to lead and inspire--
Let him speak.
She was separated from them and put to work in a different--
It is out of order. It's out of order.
The First Amendment of the Constitution trumps any of this.
We are, we are dictated by the New York State Board of--
Now we have, right now, now we have--
Board of Education-- New York State Board of Education Law.
Many of our speakers have named names--
Excuse me, I'm speaking, Mrs. Houston.
And he did not say anything wrong about anyone.
Houston.
Point of order.
He did not say anything negative.
He doesn't have to say anything negative.
Plenty of people have come to this microphone and said--
These are personnel issues. These are-- These are personnel issues, Mrs. Houston. And you know that as well because you have your laurel book right in front of you.
When people come up and compliment teachers, nobody says anything. He's complimenting a teacher. You just don't like it. He's complimenting a teacher.
These are teacher, I--
Thank you.
I have nothing to like or dislike.
So I won't say any more names.
I have no question about liking or--
I won't say any more names.
You give up the clock, okay?
He didn't say anything negative about anyone by name.
It has nothing, yes, he has.
We're going to stop.
He has continued, continued to use the names of our employees who are under--
I'm calling for recess. I'm calling for recess. We will recess, we will recess for five minutes. When we come back, Mr. DeRosa, I will add two minutes to your time. And, and-- For, for, five minutes, please. Vesh, let me know when you're ready to resume. You ready? Test one. Yes, we will. We're coming back out of recess at this time. Please place two minutes back on the clock. Take two minutes. Mr. DeRosa, as I promi, as I promised, as I promised-- Two minutes. As I promised. Give, give Mr. DeRosa, give Mr. DeRosa two minutes and 30 seconds. I'm adding a 30 to it. All right? And as I promised, you can continue, continue with your comments at this time. Thank you.
So I mentioned our beloved dean, I mentioned the K through 12 coordinator of mathematics, and now I have to mention the dean of support. His position was made for him in the district where he was instructed what steps he needed to take in order to get the job. He did as was told to him by the district. He has been effective, and it's known through the numbers, and was given tenure by the board. Now they terminated his position without pay because he was misled as to what certification he needs. So this, it can't be a coincidence, okay? Or it could be, let's not, I don't want to assume, but it doesn't feel right, all right? The certification, it's, the fact that the certification issue was just found now seems very convenient, okay? I've seen illegal activity concerning certification in this school district and other school districts. It happens when it's convenient, especially when there's short staff, right? But there is a solution, as some other community members have stated. There's always a solution. So let me be clear. In the spirit of, as you guys mentioned, Teacher Appreciation Week, we're the ones that are directly in contact with this community's children. We are the ones that form relationships and bonds with our students. We are the ones that build a positive rapport and build trust with our students. We are the ones that teach academics and life lessons. We are the ones that interact with the students every single school day. We are the ones that try to motivate our students to be the best that they can be, not the superintendent. This board has failed us. I ask and plead that everybody humbles themselves. We need change. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Mr. DeRosa. Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow the young lady, the young lady to speak.
Good evening, my name is Jakara and I'm a student at this high school. As a person who came from the Bronx, I expected something completely different. I expected a school to be more calmer, higher energy, good teachers, a good, positive, you know, environment for us to learn in. Every day I come to school, now I have to have ID checks, you know, it's a hassle being, having to be checked by security 24/7 in the morning, it's just too much. What I get is for, you know, security and, you know, physical being and all that, so I guess. My second day of school, I had an anxiety attack, and it was pretty bad, but luckily I had Mr. Perez as my dean, and he let me go in his office, he had a talk with me, you know, and from there we built a bond. And then to realize that he wasn't, you know, in school anymore, it kind of hurt me because it was like, he was that person who I could just go to whenever I needed him, and now I can't because he's not here. And as someone who suffers from anxiety, it's just like, who do I have to go to now? And knowing people also have that connection with Perez or Mr. Williams, you know, it hurts to know that they're not here anymore, that we can't like go to them in school or something because they're not here, but... It brings me to my next case of, when can we come to school to actually learn and just get an education? It's stressful coming to school and having so many fights and not having the right proper training for the security guards. There are security guards who do actually do their job, and to them, I respect you, and I thank you for all that you do. But there are some security guards who are just here to like joke around with the kids, and I mean, I get it, you're trying to make your job fun and make school a good place for us and all, but like, at the same time, you gotta do your job. The fights, it got, it has to stop. I shouldn't have to come from the Bronx and come up here and still be around the same thing. I came up here to escape, and it feels like it's worse than the Bronx. With all the fights and all the commotion, it's just, it needs to stop. So with that being said, when does it change? And to you, Ms. Houston, I want to say thank you for standing up for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna let it, and then we're gonna, we're gonna move forward.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I read the speech that I wrote for tonight, I would like to point out that you called for a five-minute recess, and I was here walking out yelling at Ms. Houston, you said that it was executive session and it took you 14 minutes to come back here. You might want to change your watch battery. Originally, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but sitting here and listening to everyone, I was becoming more and more upset about the things that are happening in this district. I'm not sure what it is about this board, but you guys don't seem to understand that the more you play with the careers of the only people that genuinely care about your students, and not just the scholars, the delinquents included in that, the more problems you're gonna have. You took Mr. Perez out of the building, and the amount of fights that were going on during the school day started wrapping in. Not taking away Mr. Williams, I'd like to point out, after praising how good he is with the children, just like he did to Mr. Perez. I am not as close to Mr. Williams as I was with Mr. Perez, but anytime I had a problem and Mr. Perez or my dean was not available, he was the person I went to. He listens to every problem his student has, whether it's the stupidest thing or something actually wrong, and he provides legitimate solutions. I'm not gonna lie, I was definitely in the delinquent class of high school, but Mr. Perez and Mr. Williams did whatever it was that I needed in order to push me to get my diploma. My little sister is a freshman here, my little sister is a scholar. You're taking away the two men that helped me the most from not only her, but all of her friends, and I'm not sure why you feel that's okay. I genuinely am upset that she doesn't have these men looking out for her because you guys have decided that they're not up for the job or they're not qualified, but I remember this being a problem when Mr. Williams was first hired, so why five years later is this now an issue? I don't understand that either. I don't really have much more to say, the only thing that I'm, what I'm gonna leave you with is what would you do if your child was losing the only support that they had in the school?
Thank you.
I don't believe that I've ever properly introduced myself to you guys, so I guess I'll start there. Hello, everyone, my name is Melody Carrillo, and I was a Middletown graduate in the class of 2020. Public speaking really is not my thing, but I'm trying my best. I know that you're not going to listen to a word that any of us say, but I'm gonna try anyway. I wish that I could say that I'm surprised by the actions of the board, but I'm not. You've shown me a number of times now that we can't trust you, we can't trust you to do what's right. Not all of you, Ms. Houston, Mr. Gomez, we see you and we appreciate your efforts to make the right decision. As for the rest of you, how can you just sit back and let this happen, first to Mr. Perez and now to Mr. Williams? Yeah, I'm saying their names. I don't know much about you at all, but I know that you voted for something that was deliberately targeted towards hurting another person, and I know that you sit back and have side conversations while we're speaking. We shouldn't have to ask you to listen to what we say, it's basic respect. Mr. Perez doesn't deserve this treatment, and neither does Mr. Williams, no one does. You claim you want diversity in our schools, you preach about tolerance and acceptance, yet every time you try to remove an administrator, they sure do match a certain profile. Education, Education Law Section 913 authorizes a Board of Education to have a medical examination of an employee conducted when questions arise as to the employee's physical or mental health. This is what was passed on April 7th. Don't think that we don't know who that motion was aimed at. You're contributing to the stigma surrounding mental health by using it as a tactic to falsely remove an individual that everyone adores. As a psychology student, I don't like that. Every time an administrator comes in and receives immense praise from students, you try everything in your power to get them removed. Maybe you should be the ones to receive an evaluation because, and please correct me if I'm wrong, this gaslighting and manipulative behavior and failure to accept responsibility for your actions, they look a lot like the traits of narcissists to me. Have a good night.
Hold up. Jesus Christ, sorry. So my name is Desiree Demond, I'm actually a senior here. I'm gonna be reading on behalf of my sister because she couldn't be here tonight, she's off in college, because you know, Williams and Perez helped her get there, but anyways. I am very, very appalled and disgusted at these situations that has been going on with the school district. We need a change. I went to the first board meeting, well, by the first board meeting, she's referring to the one that happened in August, you know, the one that you guys pulled out of your butts because, you know, you canceled the first one last minute, yeah, remember that? Okay. They are one of the, they are both the most kindest, humble, sweetheart of people you would ever meet or know. They have an impact on so many lives, and for you guys to suspend them isn't right at all. They have made a change to that school, helping thousands and thousands of kids every single day. Don't take that from him, from them. It isn't fair and it isn't right at all. Mr. Williams, keep your head up, and you know that there's definitely an army behind you. We stand with you, we love you, I'm sorry that I couldn't bake it, but now I'm with you every single step of the way. And for you guys, stop this nonsense. Boom. Now, what I want to say is, not gonna hold you in the, in my head the entire time, I'm comparing this to the Amber Heard trial because y'all real life acting like her and her lawyers in one, and that's just absolutely blowing my mind, because how are you contradicting yourself with everything you say? You didn't want, the time wasn't paused immediately when one, two, and, no, it was just you two, interrupted DeRosa while he was speaking, and while Ms. Houston, she's the only name I remember because, you know, I like her. She's speaking in defense of DeRosa, and you guys never even paused his time until we yelled at you guys, yo, pause his time, you're interrupting him, and then the gavel, really? You're talking about us being respectful, yet you're hitting a hammer, a tiny hammer on a little wooden block. That seems pretty childish. And then you called the recess because you couldn't handle everybody gaining up on you. I'm not even 18 and I'm laughing at how childish you're being, like, really, bro? Anyways, Ms. Houston brought up a great point with, you know, how DeRosa was offering a compliment to a coworker, another person in the building that works in the building, yet I'm literally insulting you guys, I did that on purpose, yet you haven't grabbed that gavel once or said anything. Yet at the beginning, when you were talking about us being disrespectful, you're not gonna allow comments like that. Mr. McNamara also came up here and called you guys Amy's army, no one's grabbed a gavel, no one said anything to me about getting down there or sitting back down or whatever you guys said about points, I don't know, wasn't really paying attention. You also don't value our time because that recess was over five minutes, you called it for five, I counted, bro. I didn't count when you started, but from 9:20 to 9:25, you guys weren't back in here. You were slowly shuffling in here. Doesn't make sense. And I also saw a couple of times, you were about to speak, but then, you know, we started standing over there so we can come up here and speak before you had anything to say, because we knew that you were about to cut our time because, you know, you wanted to take a recess and gather around and talk or whatever, and we were just supposed to wait, and, oh, okay, the meeting's over, everyone can go home while we discuss. Town meeting, include the town in the discussion. You want to share with the class because we'd love to know what the topic is about? Because I'm in a subject and I have no clue what anyone's teaching, because you're not teaching me, because you know the people who taught me aren't here, they're suspended, and we want to know why, because it makes no sense to me. Because I came up here and I spoke last time, and Ms. Cretin, you also called my house, and you said you would offer student support services, because when I came up here last time, I said I was out of the building for trying to do something to myself. And you know who controls those student support services? Who did you most recently suspend? Mr. Williams, that doesn't make sense. Like my sister said, get it together.
Hi. You've heard from my mother, my father, my sister. I'm the freshman, I'm the one who you stole Perez from, I'm the one who you've now stolen Williams from. I'm the one who has to carry around this lovely ID every day, or else I can't get into the building, and your answer for everything is suspension. I'm the child that you're telling be more mature, grow up, act your age, meanwhile, one, two, sat here arguing while you're in a position of power. See, I'm just trying to understand because the adults who are supposed to be the role models for my generation can't seem to behave themselves. And it was said by other people, five-minute break, lasted a little longer than five minutes, and Mr. Crescendo, you turned off comments on Facebook because you didn't like what people were saying on your posts, by people, I mean, my father. And Ms. Blumenhow, I think, I don't know, I really don't remember your name, at the last meeting, you picked a fight with my mother. Yeah, you did, because I was there. You know what? You can say whatever you want while you're sitting behind your little table, but do not play with my family. And I don't mean it as a threat, I simply mean it as, whatever you say about anyone in my family, I'll say whatever I want right back to you. That's really all I have to say.
With that being said, I am going to, I'm going to, and Darryl, Darryl, you be the last one, please.
Good evening, I'm Darryl McElroy, spoken before. Wanted to primarily come to speak on behalf of the school budget, which I know the budget hearing was earlier, but I didn't want to prolong that experience any longer than necessary. This is probably one of the most responsible budgets that I've seen in the 20-plus years that I've lived here in the community. Where do you see anywhere else with a tax decrease? That's, that's pretty unheard of, and, you know, while there are certainly things we can improve, because we can always improve, and there are definitely programs that we can make sure that we not only maintain but build upon for our young people, because that's why we're all here. It would certainly not make a lot of sense to do anything but to support the budget and to vote yes on the budget. However we feel about any of the other things that are going on, the way to address that would be with board elections. But voting down the budget because you're upset, that would not be a prudent thing to do. I think we're all very passionate, I think, about the things that we believe in and support and the people we're here to speak on, and I don't know all the information, so it would be foolish for me to say anything. But I can speak as having been a former board member, there are things that you just cannot say because you are bound by law to not say them. And that makes it difficult to respond to the very, you know, I think reasonable questions and concerns that people have because you just can't, you just can't do that. And that doesn't help the situation, it doesn't help lower the temperature, it doesn't help bring clarity to things, and it, and it creates frustration. doesn't help bring clarity to things, and it, and it creates frustration for everybody. And I would just, you know, ask for everybody to consider, you know, doing their part to have these discussions in as respectful a way as possible. I've, I've known a lot of these folks for a really long time. They're, they're good people. And even the folks on the board who I don't agree with all the time, like, I particularly respect the idea that we should have free speech at the microphone, that we shouldn't have viewpoint discrimination because we happen to disagree with what is being said. But at the same time, we also have a responsibility as community members, when we are making statements at the board, at the microphone, to do those statements with some level of respect, to have some decorum, right? The, one of the biggest problems of this country is that we do not listen to each other. We are just shouting at each other, yelling at each other, and not really listening in a, in a thoughtful and deep way. And it's not easy, because we've been through probably the worst experience that any of us have been through in our lives. I mean, certainly for me. And I say that as a teacher, a parent, husband, a son, you know, this has been, this has been hard. So what I would encourage folks to do, of course, is, you know, channel their energies in a positive way. Make your voices heard on May 17th. You know, you have an opportunity to vote for whoever you want. There are a lot of candidates running. I would encourage people to, you know, listen to the Meet the Candidates Night next week, and get those folks to answer the questions that you have, right? What they, their vision is, what they would like to do, how they'd like to approach these things. But we are not gonna get anywhere if we are at each other's throats. And that, to me, is concerning, because I started here, my involvement in the board, Pastor knows this, when we had meetings until 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, and it was really, really just not good. And I don't wanna go back to that place. I don't think anybody here wants to go back to that place, because we wanna celebrate the things that our community has been doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We're going to move on, real quick, to our action items. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for speaking. Thank you for your, thank you for your patience, despite, despite how heated it gets. I, I'd like to sincerely say that I do have great respect for each and every one of you. And so, not gonna dwell there. We're gonna move on. Action items.
Is there any letters Pastor?
There is one, there's one, there's one letter.
There is a letter from the Kiwanis Club. Dear Ms. Creeden, on behalf of the Middletown Kiwanis Club, Sue and I would like to thank you and your staff for supporting our annual Pancake Day held at the high school on April 9th of this year. Turns out, the March 12th date was only a practice run. I can only begin to tell you what a wonderful staff you have, but I am sure you already know that. Working with the Buildings and Grounds Department and the Food Service Department, everyone was prepared to help us in any way they could, making our experience a pleasure. The way they went out of their way to make our March 12th event work despite the rapidly approaching snowstorm speaks to that effort. That effort continued as they assisted us in rescheduling and finally bringing the event to the successful conclusion it was. Speaking of students, as you know, several young men and women from the Key Club and the NJROTC were helping us at the event. They proudly represented Middletown High School effectively with grace and manners. They were a great asset to us, and very simply, we could not do it without them. We heard many comments from the community throughout the day regarding what wonderful young men and women they all were. Sincerely, Rick and Sue Scott, Co-Chairs, Pancake Day.
Thank you. Moving on to our action items. I need a motion for the approval of Financial Memorandum Number 21, please.
All moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Approval of Special Services Memorandum 21, please. May I have a motion?
Second on that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Approval of Agreement Between Healthy Kids Program and the ECSDM. May I have a motion, please?
All move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Approval of Change Orders. May I have a motion, please?
All move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Perrino, is there anything on that?
Uh, the change orders basically concern a, one is a credit for an unused bond fee, and the other is a air conditioning issue. It's a change order to replace the remaining pipe insulation on the main line serving the new MHS chiller. We had a, as you remember, we had to put a new MHS chiller. So, it's actually to replace the remaining pipe insulation. It, pretty standard stuff has to be done. I discussed this at length with Bill, so I'm good with that.
Thank you, sir. You've heard the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Approval of Acceptance of the DS, D-A-S-N-Y Grant. May I have a motion, please?
All move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It so passes. Thank you. Approval of Contract for Professional Services for Rosa Educational Consulting Incorporated. May I have a motion, please?
So move on that.
Moved, seconded. Did I get a second? Uh, second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a statement for discussion time. I do wanna wish everyone a happy Teacher Appreciation Week, and that's where my statement stems from. After spending more than two decades in the classroom, I have certainly valued a great deal of my own wonderful opportunities for professional development. One of the things I enjoyed the most was the time to collaborate with my colleagues. Over the years, there were a few courses, however, that I found disturbing, such as those that brought inappropriate political issues into a fourth-grade classroom, and others that removed the human element from a very human population, or, excuse me, from a very human profession, and the negative impact that could have on the relationship between teachers and their students. With regard to Financial Memorandum Item Number Eight, Approval of a Contract to Provide Administrator Training on How to Evaluate Our Faculty, I took a deeper look into the consulting company our district is interested in hiring to provide our administrators' training on how to evaluate our teachers. I cannot and will not support the spending of our tax dollars on this program. Not only did I find that the company's leader has made one-sided political preferences known, and, in my opinion, not such a nice way online, I'm not comfortable with some of the language used in some of the articles and blogs linked by this individual regarding the training itself. For example, I do not feel it is an administrator's responsibility to coach a teacher or faculty member on what his or her personal values should be, which was listed on the literature online. It, it also discouraged the relaxed atmosphere for the teachers to collaborate with one another, referring to competing agency professional development opportunities such as social hours. After deep, after taking a deep dive and reading this company's blog, my general impression is that it will teach our administrators how to micromanage our already overburdened faculty and will negatively impact relationships and morale. While the intention of our administration of implementing this coursework is, may be, may be very good and sound great on paper, I'm personally not in favor of it. The blog uses language such as targeted and ongoing and linked an educational article referencing the inner workings of teachers' unions, which I found to be directed as negative rather than supportive. Our teachers need to be lifted up and valued as individuals in a warm and diverse group. Although well-intended, I see this having a potential, if continued, because it's been going on for two years, to cause division between leaders and educators within our district, further disrupting and contributing to a toxic work environment. That is why I will be voting no on this item, and I do encourage my colleagues to do the same. And just to give some facts, I understand one of the reasons this was seconded is because it uses the Danielson method, or model, excuse me, which is the bargaining approved rubric, but I think there are other options that we could use, and we've spent almost $50,000, if this gets approved tonight, with $35,000, $6,000, and now this will be an additional $6,000. I just, I don't know, I just feel like there's other ways. My opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. We've had the discussion. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Oppose.
It so passes. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports. Any committee reports tonight? Mr. Mitchell Williams.
Um, Beth, you wanna put that up? Just me being a part of the Diversity Committee, as well as Mr. John Perrino, as well as Mr. John Williams. One of the things we did months ago was working with the hiring practices. One of the goals was, you know, the committee was talking about as far as more diverse staff, as well as inclusion of people from our town, the importance of that. So it was, uh, something that came from an audit. Amy, if you could remind me what was, what was the audit from?
The Equity Audit.
Yeah, Equity Audit. So I, I just, I just wanna thank Jillian Crawford and her whole HR team, 'cause these are just the numbers right here. Out of 238 employees, from 21 to 22, 52% of them were Black, Hispanic, and 52% of them from the town, from the city of Middletown. And, uh, we're still, we're going in a positive direction in that goal. And I, once again, I just wanna thank Jillian Crawford and the whole team. Excellent job, as far as reaching out, uh, trying to, trying to get people to just come out and look for jobs and stuff like that. And it's just been a great job, and we're gonna continue to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other committee reports? Mr. Perrino?
Yes, we're gonna have a meeting of Safety and Security on May 11th, and after consultation with Mr. Mitch Williams, we decided to add Dave Green, member of the committee, to the, as a member of the committee. Now, if you don't know, Mr. Green has a long history of working with juveniles. He was a juvenile officer for the Middletown Police Department for many, many years. His dad was also in the police department, so I think that will be a welcome addition to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. The Policy Committee meeting was rescheduled due to a death of my family on Tuesday, so we were unable to meet, but we have, we are rescheduling that meeting. So we sent out a notice for best time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any other committee reports?
The meeting isn't until June. What a committee.
Party committee meeting is not to June. Oy.
Fair funding was moved to next week.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Fair funding was rescheduled to next week due to members not being able to make it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We're, we're going to, we're going to move on. I, in the interest of time, I'd like to, I'd like to, to motion that we, motion that we, we exclude Roundtable tonight.
I, I would decline on that. I, I have something prepared.
Um, well, I'm asking, that's why I'm asking. I'm asking for a motion. A motion, a motion for such, if, if you, if everyone prefers to go with Round, with Roundtable, then we'll go with Roundtable.
I'll make a motion to...
What is the preference, what's the preference of the, of the, of the board?
I'll make a motion to not have Roundtable tonight in the interest of time and energy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Um, let's call for, let's, let's, let's do it this way.
Discussion?
Let's do, let's do, um, brief, brief discussion.
Um, I prepared a statement, and I only get four minutes at every meeting to speak, and I don't think that, since this agenda is already approved, that we can make a change to the agenda now.
Well, that's, that, the motion, the motion, the motion does allow change to it at the end of the meeting. At the end of the meeting, we, I, we have a motion, and we have a second, and I'm gonna call for a roll call. If, if it's the preference of the board to go forward with everybody, this is everyone's opportunity to respond to what we've heard tonight, and if such, we can go forward. But I ask for a roll call on this particular motion that's been put forth at this time.
Mrs. Blumenau?
It's a yes to not have Roundtable.
Right.
Mr. Crescendo?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
No.
Mr. Perrino?
Yes, with the readiness of the hour and the fact that, uh, we'll have to, they don't call me.
Ms. Tobiasin?
Yes.
Mr. Freddie Williams?
Uh-huh.
Pastor Williams?
I'll vote yes, since I asked for the motion.
Mr. Mitchell Williams?
No.
Is it?
The motion passes five to three.
So we will, we will forego, we'll forego Roundtable for tonight. I will, I will say this. We have our board forum, which will be on Monday and Tuesday at 7:00 PM. I think you can, I think you can get, you can submit your questions still.
So basically, everybody's...
On the website. Anybody that has questions, they'd like to, can submit them on the website.
Wow.
Um, also, also, I do wanna, I do wanna make a one last statement as the, as the president, as the president of the board. Do appreciate, and I want you all to understand, we do appreciate and we hear all of your concerns. There are a lot of things, a lot of things that we are bound by law not to be able to say, and not to be able to speak about. And so, that's why. But don't ever think that there's not a solution, and there's not something that we're not working toward. Some of you, some of you in this room know me very well. And so, to think that, to think that we were arbitrarily, arbitrarily do things, you know, it, it's a little concerning. But nevertheless, we, we shall continue to try to move forward together.
Definitely.
We should continue to try to move forward definite, and...